This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order, Southampton Select Board at 6 o'clock on February 27th. And if you could please start the meeting by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Do we have anybody here who has open time for the public? Yes, Robert.
Evening, Robert Floyd, College Highway. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to working with you, Scott.
Yeah, it's a pleasure to work with you also, Robert.
Cheers. We find moments. In 1775, Southampton was incorporated. So next year is her 250th anniversary. The interesting fact is Southampton got its name in 1773 at a town meeting. So town meetings are 251 years old as of this year. But maybe you might want to consider putting some monies aside for the celebration for next year when you do your budget. Putting Town Moderator hat on. Annual Town Meeting is 10 weeks away on May 7th. Based on Tuesday meetings, I know you're going to be adding Thursdays, but based on Tuesday meetings, your last meeting to vote signed warrant is Tuesday, April 23, which is eight weeks away. And the Town Moderator Annual Town Meeting Information Session will be Thursday, May 2nd.
Got it.
So the success of a town meeting isn't really what's going on in a meeting at the time, I believe, but what happens before that with hearings and meetings, and you're really on top of that. And I just want to remind you to consider putting a deadline for the proposed articles for the warrant. Okay, we'll put my other hat on Cemetery Commissioner. Then I'll sit down.
Okay.
Right before Thanksgiving. Oh, by the way, we're honorary members, charter members of the Brothers of the Bush for the celebration for 250 years, and we'll conclude random.
Whoa, 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 I understand you now. A little slow on that.
I don't wipe my notes, I don't look at them. But you two volunteered to look at the pipe, the town pipe that goes through the cemetery about three months ago. David Wells, our Cemetery Commissioner, cleared it all, painted the failing pipe, and your suggestion was appropriate. Can we reduce the flow to prevent future damage? But we have a lot of damage already, and I seen water coming under that pipe. I've visited three more times, and I think there's a rupture in the pipe. So that really, I'd like to see us look at that and maybe consider what we can do before the budget.
Thank you for continuing to gather evidence and options. I did bushwhack down there with my doggy, and I saw a big hole, and I saw-
I went in the rain, which is really more telling, because you can see-
I think I'll go tomorrow.
You can see the water coming down from the road.
Yes, thank you. It's not forgotten, and thank you for keeping after the details.
Trying to figure out a solution is going to be the biggest challenge in terms of how to deal with it, but at least-
We can do something in the next two weeks together or whatever, because I like to bring it up again at our March 12th meeting. Okay, so good evening.
Thanks.
Thanks, Robert. Very good. Okay. All right. So with that, um, yes, Lucy, yeah, sure.
I know you're short, so you couldn't see.
I couldn't see you. Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk. Do I have to give my address? No.
Ten song though. I just wanted to remind voters, Tuesday, March 5th, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. voting begins for the presidential primary. Today was the last day to get the applications in for mail-in voting. It was at 5:00 p.m., so there is no more opportunities for mail-in voting. So anyone who requested a ballot should have gotten the application in by today, by 5:00 p.m. So now it's time for everybody who got the ballots to please mail them back to us, or if you don't want to mail them back, you can bring them and put them in the Town Clerk ballot box outside at the bottom of the stairs. I know a lot of people have been having some questions about the Libertarian ballot. I cannot talk about political parties, but if you have questions, just give us a call, and we'll answer any questions that we can. But next Tuesday, March 5th, is the election day. So, all right.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
And Clerk, you mentioned Election Day, and you mentioned mail-in ballots.
Yes.
I had a delightful experience in early voting.
Oh, yes. Early voting is-
If you're really stuck, just walk yourself down to Lucy's office and take care of it.
Is continuing tomorrow, early voting, 8:30 to 4:00, and Thursday, 8:30 to 4:00. There is no early voting on Friday because we are closed on Friday, and the state says if your offices are closed on Fridays, you are not required to have early voting.
Is nothing on Monday?
No, no.
So there's two more days of early voting in person?
Two more days of early voting, and we do not leave the office for lunch, so we are here if you want to come.
There was no line.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. All right. Good. Well, before we get started, Ver, I think everybody knows what date is upon us here. We think we have Ed's last Select Board meeting after all these many years, and just, we will be doing a bit of a celebration tomorrow. But we just want to say thank you very much for all your time and effort, and lots of extra hard work, and lots of long hours trying to serve the town of Southampton, and we really, really appreciate all that you've done for the last six years. There's a long list of achievements that have happened under your watch. So wish you well, and hope you can find some snow somewhere to go skiing or do something.
I will be, and thank you. It's been a pleasure working with everyone over the past six years here in Southampton. I will miss it. And geez, I don't know what I'll be doing with these extra hours in the evening that I usually might be here till 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, but I'm sure I'll find something.
Just make sure your car's not on autopilot for Southampton or something like that. Good. So anyway, we'll finish some celebrations tomorrow. And with that, let me welcome our new Town Administrator, Scott Zebek, and very, very pleased to have you with us, and very fortunate to have had a few days overlap with Ed and a couple more to go, and look forward to having you here after serving in the big towns, big cities of Chicopee and Wellesley, and most recently Lawrence. And so looking forward to your orientation to Southampton and helping us along in our new journey.
Thank you for the warm welcome, and thanks, Ed. And obviously, with the orientation that you put together, it's been really helpful, so I look forward to working with everyone.
Great. Well, as we figured out, you know, trying to cram six years of Ed's knowledge of how to deal with things in town into a five-day overlap is a little bit challenging. So we'll cover the high points, and then hopefully we can get a few more details as we go along here. But with that, thanks very much. So tonight, we have just a couple of reports to the Select Board. There's no public hearings, no presentations. And our first one up is the Ad-Hoc Tech Committee with Megan Gentile as the Chair. So please, yeah, Megan, just introduce yourself and-
Okay. Hi, I'm Megan Gentile. I've served on the Ad-Hoc Tech Committee, sorry, since April of '21, I think. So just realized that the other day. So this is the report to the Select Board of what we've accomplished and where we're going '23 and '24. So 2023 summary, it was a very productive year. We had three major projects that Ed and Chris and Dan have all helped along with. We are also recommending that we hire a third-party IT company down the line to provide managed services to the Town Hall rather than the current break-fix model. And of course, we're looking forward to surveying the town in the future. So where we've been in 2023, first up was my favorite project. It was a new website. We worked with Final Site, a website development company, to develop a brand-new website that has many new benefits. The most new ones from the old site were mobile-friendly, searchable right on the homepage, easy to update and edit. Now all department heads and committee and board chairs can now edit their own pages, which reduces the burden for the town admin. And it also links to My Town Gov for all meetings, agenda, minutes, et cetera.
So that didn't change. That stays as the, you know, that was something that wasn't broken, so we didn't try to fix it, basically.
Right, yeah. And the initial first draft of the website, everything was simply, like, basically copied and pasted, so we didn't lose any data. The next project, or not next in succession, but the next one up is a new phone system that was working with Valley Communications and TPX to first get the VoIP system, voice-over IP. Many new benefits there, caller ID, incoming and outgoing, call forwarding, call waiting, auto attendant. So when people call in, there's a menu-
Really?
-to be determined. And then that was the benefit that will be rolled out, extension to extension delivery, and cost savings overall. In the midst of the phone system, we also made upgrades to the Town Hall internet speed, performance, and bandwidth. The last one, I think, that we accomplished going into '24 was the new server and email system. That was working with Novus Insight. I believe we're still kind of working out some kinks with that. But we got a new server, new email provider, and an upgrade to the current operating system software. And I believe the treasure collector is working on new software. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. That's not mentioned here, but that's from '24. So some of the benefits for that is data backup moved onto the cloud, security, hardware, and software are now up to date. Email issues have been resolved. Some domains were never being received. I believe Hotmail was one of them that was giving issues. And then shared documents between departments will be securely shared. Where we're going, 2024. So upcoming projects, we're hoping to upgrade the wireless internet, specifically in the senior center, but also just Town Hall-wide. Hoping to work with a third-party provider on this. Townwide fiber to the home for residents and to Town Hall via a MLP, which has passed two votes, two votes at Town Meeting. So we're on to the next stages. The RFI, I was just told, the first draft will be sent today. So that's awesome. To Whip City Fiber and Sheldon, which is South Hadley Electrical Lighting Department.
Yep.
Yeah, and Holyoke too, yes. We're exploring different options for townwide community solar, seeing if it's even feasible, and being a resource to a smaller project, but upgrading the library conference room so that there is possibly a TV, there is possibly a conference meeting phone, just making it more desirable to meet in. And the upcoming project as well that I didn't put on here was on the first page on the summary, was to get the non-break-fix model and get managed services. And that's it.
That's it. Very good. All right, good.
Are there any questions?
I think firstly, we want to say thank you for all your hard work, for you and your committee, what you've done for this town. I mean, just in terms of the improvements for Town Hall, it's night and day. So it's really come a long way, and we're looking forward to see what happens in the future. So thank you.
Yeah. And especially all the work for you and with Dan Breen on the website and all the training for everybody that got trained on the new website. I think many people are accessing their pages and trying to keep them up, and I think we'll keep on pushing that notion, because I think that really does, you know, serve as a good central point of information for the town. And the more we can make it a bit colorful, add some photos and so forth of activities going on, you know, if you look at other towns and so forth, just to make it, you know, just very attractive and welcoming, I think, for new people coming in. So that would be good. But much appreciate that. I know we've talked about solar for quite a while in terms of, you know, can we think about a way to bring in a solar program project so that we can reduce some of the costs for municipal buildings, especially this place in terms of our electrical costs and so forth. So I'm glad you guys are starting to explore some of that. That's great.
As is the Planning Board, so that community solar question is before both committees. Thank you. I think it's an excellent idea, empowering committee chairs and department heads to do their own update. I have had opportunity to interact with many committees, and they're going through their list of forms and documents to provide the higher level of, you know, up-to-date customer service. Some of this is pretty much out of the archives, you described, but some of it is brand-new this week, and the assessors have made several updates this week. So it is a great and important resource that we're using. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks. And just, again, just for the public listening and watching out there, we just want to encourage anybody to go to the Town website, townofsouthampton.org, and take a look around and look for things. We've actually got quite a few businesses now that have registered, so-
I was just going to mention that.
For anybody who's looking for businesses, the business page has turned out to be relatively popular, where businesses in town have put in their name and address, and if they have a Facebook or website, they're linking to that. So just to get a general idea of what's going on in town, I think we've tried to make it, you know, more user-friendly in general. So hopefully this will continue, and thank you again for all your work on that. Much appreciated.
You're welcome. Happy to-
The question I always like to ask, is there anything that we as a Select Board can do to help your committee and your mission move forward?
Stay involved, pretty much. I mean, everything will fall into line from there. So, yeah, I know both of you and the town admin will join in on meetings, so just stay involved, and if we need you, just be available, I guess.
Yeah, certainly. Good. Thanks much. Thank you, Megan. Yeah?
Thank you, Megan.
Good. And Ed, if you wouldn't mind putting on my presentation next, such as it is, on the grant one. I'll just make myself comfortable here rather than standing up. It's just a one-pageer, so I don't have to flip any pages.
Oh, nuts. Sorry about that.
Oh, no. I love this thing.
Yeah. Okay. I'll have to go back in.
And just for Scott's benefit, we've got two or three ad hoc committees that we've created over the last couple of years, and the tech committee is one. So that's where one where we, you know, definitely didn't have a lot of the bandwidth within town employees and so forth to really spearhead it. So actually, Dan is one of the founding members of the committee too, and that really has taken off in the last couple of years and really helped out a lot, so.
Oh, come on. Come on. Okay. It's connected. So now, browser. Come on.
Just waiting to get connected, folks.
Chris, while he's working on that, was there an update on the cost efficiency or no update?
Yeah, I could just say that very briefly. Cost efficiency is actually going to be meeting tomorrow for a short meeting, just a quick handover and orientation between Ed and Scott and us. So we'll be meeting at 3:30 tomorrow on a Zoom meeting. Thank you, Ed. Not a whole lot of update for right now. I'd rather wait until after we get through that meeting, and then we can, I don't, oh, I have to scroll down. Sorry, yeah, thank you. We'll have a report on that a little bit later, but probably the biggest thing that the Cost efficiencies committee's been working on is pulling up a report that was done for the town in 2016 to look at the structure of government, just basically feeling that our current structure is very flat, is not ideal for accountability, a lot of appointed and elected boards and committees, and just trying to make some recommendations for how we could maybe structure ourselves a bit differently to better serve the town. And so a couple of the recommendations in there involve combining some of the committees and commissions, for example, trying to combine highway and water and parks and cemetery into a DPW. So we actually did have a meeting back in November with people from those different departments and commissions and committees to talk about that. And then we'll be picking that back up as we move along with Scott to talk about where we want to go with that. But it's a long process. It's not something that will happen overnight, but there may be some small steps that we can take incrementally as we go along. So we'll be reporting on that a little bit later in a bit more detail, okay? So thanks for that, John. Just briefly, on the ad hoc check, sorry, I wish I was, ad hoc grant committee, that's another ad hoc one, Scott. So I'm just trying to do a little bit of a summary here. I hope people can see this okay. So this is kind of the status of what we have on our plate right now as active grants as of February 24. And this is, I guess I would say, some of the larger grants that the, either the Town Administrator or the tech committee has, the ad hoc grant committee, rather, has been involved in. It is not including all of the smaller grants that perhaps fire, police, CONCOM, open space, planning may have gotten yet. One of the things, my goal is to try and make that a more comprehensive chart of grants that we've been able to acquire over the last year, maybe two years, and be able to post that up on the website. So I haven't gotten all the details on some of that yet. So that's where that's going, but I wanted to at least give you a draft of where things stand right now. The one that's been on our plate for a while is this DOER Green Communities Grant, and this is something actually that was, we qualified as a green community apparently back in December of 2017 before Ed came. And so that makes us a green community, and then we were allocated that amount of money to start doing projects related to that that would decrease our, I guess I would say, our fossil fuel footprint. Is that correct to say, Ed? Basically? And show a reduction of 20%, is that right, in our-
Energy.
Energy, energy costs. So basically, trying to show a 20% cost savings in our energy around our various town buildings. So over time, we haven't had enough good projects to really put together, and then over the last year, we've put a bigger focus on this to basically put together four projects, and I believe it's Town Hall, Library, School,
Old Town Hall-
And the Old Town Hall Police Station. We've come together with four projects that would do some things like replace lighting, better HVAC situations, et cetera. And those proposals, we had reviewed at Select Board and approved on those, and then those have gone to Eversource for their, basically their evaluation in terms of the level of cost savings. That has gone from Eversource now to DOER. And so we're still waiting on DOER to say, yeah, we agree that this is really worth it, and go ahead and, you know, activate the project per se, using the money that we have available there. So we're really going to be following this one up and hoping to get some results, or final answer on this within the coming month here, with all due luck, because I think we've, you know, want to show that we're trying to use this money. And then this is sort of a continuing one, from what I understand, this money actually doesn't expire. As we use this money, we can come forward with other projects in the future. And so we'll be looking to keep on doing that and expand our possibility for energy savings wherever we can. The next couple are related to the Community Compact. There's two, the first one is a best practices grant, and we've used part of that for the Classification Compensation Plan through Collins. So we had allocated, we're given $30,000 to get that done, and that will expire by June. And so that's one that's going to be finished up before that time. And then the ADA Building Study, this is to look at the accessibility of our various town buildings, a study we were allocated $15,000 for that. And that too would be, needed to be done in the coming six months or so. So we're looking forward to those. The Community Compact IT Cybersecurity, this is one where there was no money involved, but the number of people to be trained. So this is going to be basically sort of a, I don't know, ongoing training program, I guess, where, you know, there might be some suspicious emails that go out or things like that, and then town employees or people that have the Town of Southampton address will, you know, be taking a look at that and trying to figure out, should I open that attachment or shouldn't I, et cetera, et cetera, trying to improve our just general cybersecurity awareness as an educational point of view, but also some practical kind of fun testing kind of things. So that's something that we were waiting until we got all the Nova stuff dealt with to really implement. So that should be starting very soon as well. And that'll be something that probably will, Scott will be sending out various emails and training opportunities there, but it's going to be more online kinds of stuff for people that are here at Town Hall. The HMPG is the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. We've got a grant for that as well, for about $27,000, plus the value of the costing of our in-kind hours for the people that would be attending that set of sessions. This is going to go on for probably a solid year, I would say, over time. And this is one where it doesn't expire until October 25. And by getting our Hazard Mitigation Plan update done, then that helps qualify for other grants going forward. The way that this is usually structured is that the Fire Chief EMD is the team leader, and so we have been sort of pending on this one in the last few months, just waiting on the Fire Chief to be selected, but also have gotten, put out a request for quotes, and basically Pioneer Valley Planning Commission came in as the lowest entity to give us a quote on this, and so they will be the facilitator, I guess I would say, shepherding us through this update process. So that will be coming on hopefully very soon too, in the next couple of months. The Park Grant, this is one that was, people will remember, was awarded a couple of years ago. This was for the spray deck formerly called splash pad, reduced in size and scope with more water, lower water usage, but a spray deck and a walking path through Conant Park. That is still partly in process. We've got to do some final procurement on that, but that is not dead in the water. We're going to be working on that in the coming months as well. The equipment for the spray deck is, has been received, but we've got to go back out for the company to do some installation and get some quotes on that. Stormwater Asset Management, this is really through the Highway Department. This is where I believe they're looking at some, an inventory of the culvert status in town and an upgrading of, you know, what are the quality of these culverts? Do they need to be resized, or some of them just totally deteriorated and need to be replaced, et cetera. Tie and Bond is working on that one, and this is a grant of $84,000, but we had to also have a match on that of $35,000 was the town's contribution to that. The way this grant was particularly structured, we had to, however, put up the entire amount of the grant, even though our match is only 35. So we actually had to put up the $140,000 total, and we did that out of our ARPA funds. So as, this is a reimbursable grant, so as costs get reimbursed from the state on the $84,000, that will flow back in to our town coffers. So the Mass Trails Grants are ones that we've worked on over the last two, three years. This is the very, well, one of the first ones, I think this is the second one we actually did, to get some funding for the preliminary design and permitting work on the trail in 2022. That one has ended up there. These are basically only year-long grants, so we apply for them every year. The design work, as you know, takes two or three years at least to get done. And so there's already been, that June 22 one has already been dealt with. And then June 23 is ongoing. That's the one that Ed and Mark Cassis went down toward Boston at some place, I forget which town now, to accept the grant last year. And that's $320,000 from the grant program, and then $80,630 was awarded to us through Town Meeting from CPC funds. The residents approved that. So that one is ongoing with that level of effort and tasks to be completed by June of '24. That follows into yet a new one for this year, which has just been submitted, which is a little bit less. So you can see the amount is only $132,000 there. That's because we wanted to be very cautious. We didn't want to not apply because then we thought that maybe somebody would think that, gee- want to not apply, because then we thought that maybe somebody would think that, gee well, Southampton's kind of given up, and you know, they would write us off in terms of our seriousness. So we wanted to at least have something on the map in terms of an application process, but we weren't quite confident in asking for bigger amounts, working with the Greenway Committee, and talking to Tie and Bond and DOT in terms of the speed at which things happen. The permitting, the engineering things, a lot of this takes a whole lot more time than one would necessarily think, and so we wanted to be extremely cautious and follow a slower timeline just in case. So we have put in a request nonetheless, and we'll hope to hear from that by July. The two others are school-related, Safe Roots to School. One is Speed Assemblies, so these are, if you drive up Pomeroy Meadow Road, there's a flashing yellow pole that has a speed sign on it. Those are pretty old, and the Safe Roots to Schools program has come out with newer improved technology models that record speeds, and I guess also give reports back to the Police Department in terms of anybody who's speeding back and forth there, so we can kind of track some of that. So this is basically not a monetary award, but equipment. So these are, the equipment is actually solar powered, and they have actually been received, they came in late fall, and so they're just waiting until springtime to be able to be installed by the Highway Department. The biggest one there is a Safe Roots to School Infrastructure Program, and this is one where we have worked with DOT and the school, police in particular, Highway, to put forth a grant application, which has been basically favorably looked at, approved, in the sense of being on, on the list of, of projects for the DOT, Mass Department of Transportation. And this is going to involve a shared use path from the corner of Pomeroy Meadow Road and Route 10, right on up to Gun Road Extension, so past, just past the school, on that right-hand side, which is now a four-foot wide set of, I guess it's basically a tarmac asphalt path, but as you remember, if anybody's walked up there lately, it's got a telephone pole or two in the middle of it. It's not exactly a walkable or bikeable way to school, and the, the whole purpose of the Safe Roots to Schools program is to improve bikeability and walkability for kids going to school. So this one is going to be worked on, DOT is very involved in this, and they will be working on this over the next two or three years, before this actually gets, you know, finalized, and, you know, anything in the ground most likely. But what it will involve is sort of replacing that asphalt walkway that's there now, and putting in what is more regulation size, which is about a 10-foot wide one, which is similar to what's up in front of Cumberland Farms, Paesano's area. So basically, what they call a shared use path, that will improve the bikeability and so forth, of getting kids back and forth to school, and that will connect on over to the, to the new sidewalk that was done in front of the cemetery, and then actually does connect to the one coming down the hill from the cemetery, although that one is probably one of the ones that would have to be looked at next in terms of trying to widen that one or make that a bit safer. It's not very, very, um...
About 10 feet.
Very, yeah, not, not very good to walk on or bike on with good, good safety there. So those are in process. The most recent ones, I think I mentioned briefly, working with retired Chief Russ Anderson. We've been able to put in two grant requests that we'll hear from hopefully in the next couple of months. So one is for the assistant, they're both for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, and one is for a tanker, which would request $643,143 of federal money. So these are both FEMA grants, and that would require only a 5% town contribution, so only $32,000 basically from the town to get $643,000. So we're hopeful on that. The chief has worked very hard, working also with interim chief Vasoli to gather all the statistics that they needed on the Fire Department and the number of calls and, you know, everything, the training that's involved, et cetera. So a lot of, lot of technical information had to go into that grant, and hopefully that will be looked at favorably. And tied with that is a replacement of 22 self-contained breathing apparatus units for the firefighters. Right now, the ones we have are pretty worn out, they're a good 15 years old. About five of them are already out of, out of service. Many of the seals around the face masks don't seal properly anymore, et cetera. So this too is a request of $222,162 for the masks from the federal government with an $11,001.08 town contribution. So again, a 5% request, match rather, on our side. So these are what's, what's happening and what we're hopeful for. You know, lots of, lots of work in, in general going into these, and as we start to see more, there's other ones that are coming out soon. It's just a matter of, you know, what, what makes sense. I mean, there's a lot to manage here. I think I've said before that, you know, when I first moved back to town, you know, I was hearing a lot of, well, we'd like to do X project and X project, but there's no money. And, you know, my argument was, well, there is money out there, you just have to go find it, whether it's federal or state. And state's a lot easier frankly than federal in terms of the requirements, but it also takes a lot to look at what's really eligible and what makes sense for the town, because, you know, we do qualify for some as a small town, but there's other characteristics of some of these grants that kick us right out the door, and we're not really very competitive. So it's a challenge. So working with Kate Rooks and Diana Fetterman and myself, we've been trying to pull this together and help any committee that's come before us, or any department that's asked for some help looking for a grant and putting something together. And Ed has been there too as our ex officio advisor in terms of how to structure some of these things, and so we look forward to continuing that process. But that's another ad hoc grant committee that I think is proving to be useful. And it's probably creating a lot more work for Bradley, actually, and, and the town administrator in terms of reporting and accounting for all of these things. But it is allowing us to move forward with certain projects that maybe had been stalled, I guess, over time. So that's that. All right?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
You acknowledged that this was the work of the committee, it does not represent all grants received by the town.
Correct.
One that I've been interested in tracking is finishing up a Mass Trails Grant for the fabrication installation of a trail.
That's the one that CONCOM got, the, the one at Manhattan Meadows, maybe?
Uh, the, the CONCOM received the grant.
Yeah.
And that's why it's not on this list. All right.
It's not on this form, but that's part of what I'm trying to do, is gather all the information for the other grants that had come through independently. They had worked on that themselves and managed to put that application in directly, they didn't need the grant committee, so.
Then I have a different question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. If not, thank you, Ed, for your computa.
That's excellent.
Okay, so, working on it. There's, like I say, there, there is money out there, it's, you know, a challenge to get sometimes, but we'll keep on trying, so. All right. I think the next up, where are we? Next up is actually reports. So Ed, we'll let you go with your town administrator report, if you're, if you're ready. We'll have the town administrator report, we'll, we can shut that one down, Ian, that's fine.
It's distributing ginger mints.
Yeah.
It's an oblique joke, isn't it?
There we go, shut that one down. Okay. Great. All right. So, Ed, you're on.
All right. Title report for the Senior Center Building Committee for the 89 Clark Street property has been requested from KP Law. The appraisal for the 89 Clark Street property has been ordered and is expected to be back to the town by March 15. An appraisal for the Zero College Highway property has been ordered on behalf of the Public Safety Building Committee and the Select Board. The MMA is having their spring legislative breakfasts on March 1 in Greenfield from 8:00 AM to 9:45 AM, and on March 8 in Hoyo from 8:30 AM to 10:15 AM. Please let Scott or Judy know if you would like them to register you for either of these legislative breakfasts. The federal election primaries, Lucy said, early will be had in March, held on March 5, 2024. There is early voting scheduled here in Town Hall. It's Wednesday, February 28, and Thursday, February 29, during regular business hours of 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM in the Town Clerk's Office. The Housing Authority has ordered a survey for the College Highway property they have acquired for use as affordable housing. And the town did receive an extension from Department of Local Services, DLS, to file our Schedule A without penalty, so the Hampshire Regional Corley Assessment Payment did go out as scheduled. The Police Department has one opening for a full-time police officer, but has several applicants who will be interviewed, and Bradley Oxon, Town Accountant, and Scott Zevak, Town Administrator, will be taking part in the DLS Financial Forecasting Training to be held in Palmer at their police station on this Thursday, February 29. Upcoming Select Board meetings, February 29, the joint meeting with the Finance Committee for Budget Hearings, and Select Board meetings for March, the regular ones will be March 12 and March 26.
Okay. Good. Any questions, Tom? Thank you. All right. How about any Select Board reports for any meetings? Dan?
Right, well, we heard from the Ad hoc Technology Committee, so there's nothing to add on that half. And for the Planning Board, I think Stephen will give you updates on that, so that's what I have.
That's what you got right now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Stephen, yeah.
On behalf of the Open Space Committee, the Select Board, the Planning Board, and the Board of Assessors, I will produce a draft Chapter 61 withdrawal
Okay.
process for review by all interested parties. I have noted the request, I've gathered some samples, I have not integrated it. So if you've read through either the town of Stowe or the town of Wenham's policy, there are only about five, six, eight pages with forms, and have comments, I'd love to hear them. It's a remarkably complex process set out in state law, and the law has evolved. So we're trying to provide good support to our taxpayers, all of our taxpayers.
And I think, just, just to add to that, because there is a process in place already to withdraw land from chapter through set committees, which are required by law, but what you're trying to do is involve a couple of other committees that don't normally get in the loop on this, like open space, for example.
Well, that, that's a second piece of it. The first piece is, the law doesn't really require any coordination among the four boards that receive notice under statute. That's reliant on it coming back to us with thoughtful consideration from the other three boards.
Each, each board reports back.
Assessors, planning, and...
Right. Yeah. Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. So that's a Planning Board report, covers a host of Chapter 61 questions that we're wrestling with. Bylaw updates, we haven't heard back, the codification, rather, the Attorney General sign-off that allows E-Law to codify the changes that were voted at town meeting. A lot of people looking for that to happen. And I guess we'll, we'll, the bylaws we're looking at are groundwater protection, I think I'd mentioned that previously. Open Space Committee met but didn't have a quorum, so we had a nice, good acquainted meeting with Scott, and that was useful.
Yep.
Assessors have a whole host of information and action before us tonight.
Okay. And Board of Health, you just came from?
I just came from Board of Health, everybody's happy up there.
Okay.
There, there, there is a town-owned property that we're going to hear about, perhaps putting out to auction, and they said they have no particular further input. They've spoken with the treasurer, and subject to action tonight, we're ready to rock and roll.
Okay. Sounds good. John?
The only, I mean, PPP had an emergency, a special meeting earlier tonight, we'll deal with that later, under another section, so I won't go into that. But the only other committee that I've met in the past two weeks is the All District Committee, which is part of the Hampshire, Hampshire Regional Custosium, and that continued hot mess that's going on there. The outcome of that is they have appointed a subcommittee, finance subcommittee, that will act similar to the finance subcommittee of a town. It is made up of representatives from each of the five communities, and we will meet tomorrow at 11 o'clock to appoint a chair. That committee will then begin holding weekly meetings with the appropriate officials from DESI, and as needed, the Division of Local Services, ongoing to try and resolve the issues there. The intent is still to get a budget process in prior to the current business administrator's departure. I would say that that's probably 60% likely going to happen, so we should, as a Select Board, make alternative plans. And I'll just continue to update biweekly as that goes on.
And he's on until June, is that right? End of June, or?
His notice, his last day is like July 10, but that will be a subject of the committee tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, so we really are going to have an interesting budget season here, since we really have...
Can't wait for finance to get here at 7.
Yeah, our biggest, our biggest contributor to our budget, not, not known really at this point in time.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's going to be a tough one.
So.
All right. Just a couple of things, Public Safety Building Committee met yesterday, and will meet again on March 4. Going to be working on more of the outreach strategy, looking at a video, we're working on some flyers, some other poster boards around town. Quiz number two is about ready to go. So we're working on some public engagement, just to get folks in town aware of what the conditions are at the current fire and police stations and the need for a new public safety complex. And the architects will be back with us at the end of March, I believe. They're going to spend time taking a look at the, sort of the final touches on a, on an improved architectural outside design, I guess I would say, and the space configuration inside, but then looking at the cost estimator of what it might cost to, to actually build this animal, I think. And Senior Center Building Committee met, and they have already gone through their, they had a per just on about a week or so ago, I think it was, a week to 10 days ago. That is all looking quite good in terms of what they saw in the field, and that report has gone over to the Board of Health to take a look at and see if they agree that they have found a, a good, good location there, and that will allow them to move forward with the next steps on hopefully acquiring that, that property. That's their goal. And that's probably about it for right now, I think, on those committees, nothing else that comes to mind. Master Plan won't meet right away again, probably not until sometime in April, I think we were talking about. So that's it for now. Okay? So with that, let's move on to appointments and resignations. So I think we have before us a resignation from Barbara Sinopoli from the Board of Assessors. She's submitted a letter saying that she, unfortunately for health issues, she's not going to be able to continue being a member of the Board of Assessors, so she's put in her resignation. If somebody would like to make a motion to accept that?
We accept resignation of Barbara Sinopoli from Board of Assessors.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved, all right. Tied with that, we do have a replacement. We have an application here from Linda Green to be on the Board of Assessors until the next town election, so until May. This will be a temporary, short-term, whatever we want to call it, appointment. Cindy, you're here from the assessors, would you like to give a word or two? I know Linda's been coming, she's met with Ed, and she's been to some of the assessor meetings, so she's had a sense of what she's getting herself into, right?
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road, on the Board of Assessors, and yes, she's expressed an interest, and we are getting to know her. We invited her to come tonight, told her it wasn't highly necessary, and so she hasn't been able to come. There is a really good thing about this, and that is, she has a really strong administrative background, and she worked in, I think it was Hampshire College and the President's Office, and is, we, we think that's going to be a real asset to the Board of Assessors. There's always a learning curve, but we're, we're happy about that. So please consider approving her, and hopefully she'll run for the next term. Thanks.
Right, so this will get us through up to the election, and then she can decide if she's going to be on.
Yeah, we've been limping along with just two people on the board.
Correct. Okay, so, could I have a motion to make this appointment, please?
I move that we appoint Linda Green to the Board of Assessors for a term running to the next annual town election, May 21, 2024.
Second.
Okay, second. Motion by Stephen, second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. John, do you have the next ones at all on? John, do you have the next ones at all on the?
Sure.
Fire Committee, Search Committee?
Take the first two up as a package. To term extensions until April 30th, 2024, or sooner if completed, for both Ben Hogan and Greg Mack, Fire Chief Search Committee. And I would just point out that Mack, there's no C in that last name.
Okay. Thanks. All right.
Second, as corrected.
Motion by John, second by Stephen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Next, I move to continue the appointment of interim Fire Chief Richard Fasoli to extend out to April 15th, or sooner if the, when the Fire Chief's position is filled.
Okay. Could we have a second?
Second.
All right. Just quick discussion, since we have April 30th on the others, should we keep that the same, or?
No difference to me.
Does it really matter?
Amended to April 30th.
Yeah, let's, I may as well.
Accept that.
Sure. Okay, so amended to April 30th, appointment of Richard Fasoli, interim Fire Chief, or until the position is filled, if earlier. Okay? So April 30th, okay. So amended motion to second on the amendment, please?
Yes, yep.
Okay. John, seconded, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That motion passes. Thank you. All right, next up, I'll, guess I'll take this one. So Scott, you may not know this, but...
Surprise, surprise. I think he's been actually reading the agenda, so...
Yeah, exactly. So Ed serves on some of these committees as our ex officio member, non-voting member, so with that, this appointment would be to appoint Scott Zivak to the Public Safety Building Committee, the Senior Center Building Committee, the Ad Hoc Grant Committee, the Ad Hoc Cost efficiencies Committee, and to serve as interim EMD until a new Fire Chief is hired on. That would be the motion.
And the terms for other than the interim EMD, please?
I guess that's a good question. We didn't put that on there, did we?
Till the Assessor is named.
Well, you could also, let's say, you could do this, June, you can align it with his contract, June 30th, 2027.
So moved.
If those committees exist.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I'm not sure, but, at least for a year, but yeah. Okay, I mean, what do you think, Scott? How long would you like to be appointed? Well, shall we go to June of, June 30th, 2027? Then we don't have to come back to this? Can we do that?
Yep.
Yeah? As long as those committees still exist.
You can do that, and if you want to add the little caveat, or sooner if the committee no longer exists.
Okay. All right, so until June 30th, 2027, or sooner if the committee ceases to exist, or no longer has need of such advice, or something. All right. Motion by Chris, second by Dan. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Welcome, welcome. Okay, so that's what we have for appointments tonight. Very good. All right, so next up, 7 o'clock, we're due to have a joint meeting with Finance Committee, and have a budget hearing, so I'm hoping that they will come as planned, but while we're waiting for them, since we can't do that before 7:00 anyway, I'd like to move up the first item, at least on the new business, which is a tax title auction for 19 Cottage Avenue, since our Treasurer Collector's here, and have Jen come up and talk to us about this property and what's going on with it. Thank you.
Jennifer Day, Treasurer Collector. All right, so this is for 19 Cottage Ave. This property was foreclosed on in May of 2022. It had been condemned prior, by our prior building commissioner, in 2018. And now I am looking to auction it by a sealed bid auction.
So who actually owns it right now?
The town.
We do?
We do.
Okay.
So, so basically, I'm here because I need the Select Board to vote on the terms and conditions of the posting for the auction, and I'm just one of them really, basically agreeing that the buyer will demo and clean the parcel within six months of ownership, or the ownership will revert back to the town.
Okay. And we think we can find a buyer within six months?
The butters are interested, so...
But that's not what she's saying.
That's not what, oh yeah. No, that's not what I'm saying. So whoever wins the bid would have to clean the parcel, demolish and clean it within six months, or ownership would revert back to the town. Yeah.
So she has the auction, she awards it to the highest bidder?
Right.
In the transfer of the deed, there's a caveat that says if you don't do this in six months, you lose ownership and reverts back to the town.
Okay.
Right.
Got it.
So it was occupied, condemned, vacant, taken as tax title. The town has owned it for a couple of years, and this is a property that will always be problematic. It is less than 4,000 square feet, less than one-tenth of one acre. It's almost entirely occupied by the structure, and...
Right.
What do they call it? Curtelage? I call it garbage. It, there's...
I mean, in that neighborhood, a lot of the properties are that size, so it will be, you know, hopefully any butter will be interested, and they can add on to their lot.
This is over the ponds, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, the Board of Health did suggest a quicker deadline for cleaning up the hazard, but if you think it requires six months before you revert to the town.
That's something that you, as a board, have to vote on tonight, so I'm sure it doesn't have to be six months, but, I mean, it is...
90 days.
I know that the Board of Health Director did mention that. The tax title attorney thought six months was a good amount of time.
Yeah. I don't want to end up having to own this if we don't...
You need to give them, you do need to give them time, the 90 days isn't really all that much time to...
Yeah.
But...
Ed, you had a thought?
Yeah. If somebody's going to buy, you need them to find a vendor and be able to get all the permits and everything to take care of it. Conversely, the other alternative is the town spends taxpayer dollars to demolish the house and clean it up, then tries to sell it. So I think this is a very good attempt to take care of the issue.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Chris?
All right, yeah.
Just two questions. Jen, is the, is the building, for all intents and purposes, secured at the moment?
Yeah, so our current building commissioner did go, did secure the building. He had, I think, is this for Kent Brothers, went, they removed and disposed of the chimney. The chimney was like falling, it was going to fall into the neighbor's property. They removed three and a half tons of debris around the home, and they, it says they installed plywood over the doors, and a snow fence around the home.
And do you know offhand, what was the taking, the dollar amount on?
Oh, yes, so that was 11,007, well, there's $11,778 due.
On the tax?
On the tax, yeah. That does not include interest.
And are you recommending a minimum on the bid?
The tax title attorney recommended $5,000 minimum.
So can you just walk the committee through, so it's 5,000 minimum, say you get one bid, 5,000, that you can apply?
Right.
Where's that 5,000 go?
It's just going to go into the general fund.
It won't go to against the taxes?
No. The tax, once, upon foreclosure, those back taxes are closed out, they're zeroed out. So it just goes right into the general fund.
So the back taxes must have got written off against something?
Right.
The overlay?
Hmm?
What, what's the other side of that transaction? When you record the...
There, I mean, I just take it off of...
You take it off your, your...
I just take it off of mine. There is no other side. I mean...
Okay.
So any back taxes would have been already dealt with way back when, when we foreclosed the first time, right? Is that what you...
Well, it was foreclosed, so they weren't paid.
Weren't paid.
Yeah.
So they're...
Yeah.
Lost essentially.
Right. Yeah, any taxes are lost, any amount of money spent on the tax title attorney, I mean, really, it's all lost, you know? And you can hope to get it back in the auction, but...
Yeah. I mean, I haven't done a tax auction since 2012, but any funds received at the sale of the auction, there should be a tax title, tax title write-off ledger somewhere in the Auditor's office. And my memory is that that would get offset by the 5,000. If for some miracle you got a $12,000 bid...
It doesn't.
The surplus would go to the general, the law must have changed.
It doesn't. It goes to the general fund. And then with the closing too, there would be like pro forma taxes, so from the date of closing to the end of the year, they would have to pay those, the new owner would have to pay the pro forma taxes on the property, and then also they would pay for the next whole fiscal year also to ensure that it's in a revert right back to tax title again.
Okay, so it'd be a little bit there. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have any thoughts or comments about it?
Do we have suggested language that you want us to approve?
So the only language that I need you to approve is just basically that the new owner of the property will demo and clean it within six months, or ownership will revert back to the town. I just need a vote of the board.
Okay. Great. All right. Is that sufficient for a motion, or would you like to, are you thinking about something else? No?
No.
All right. Everybody okay? All right.
Do you want to make that complete for us, and I'll second it?
Okay, so that, we'll, we'll take that as a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the wording of the terms and, terms and conditions of the sale to include that upon transfer of ownership from the town to the successful bidder, that they have six months to clean...
Demolish and clean.
Demolish and clean the property, or the property shall revert back to the town.
Mm-hmm. Yep, okay. Good.
Second.
Okay, motion by John, second by Stephen. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Objection, that passes.
Godspeed.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jen. Take care. All right. Okay, I think we are ready to try and do the Police Department budget review. I don't know that we have any people from FinCom coming. I haven't heard, I know Donna was maybe going to have a conflict, but I was hoping others were coming. So...
Do you want me to say?
Yeah, I guess so. Let's see if we can get started on that, and if they come, they come, if not, they'll be able to watch it and hear it, and I guess that's the best we can do. I wonder if maybe people forgot, because it's a Monday night, it's not normal. Could be that people...
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, rather, that people forgot about it. I don't...
You're normal.
I know that people forgot about it, perhaps. But we will continue with a budget hearing, special meeting, FinCom, and Select Board on Thursday this week, and we'll be picking up Fire Department and Highway, so... So, let's see if we can...
Could I have the phone, do you?
Yes.
you know, anybody that goes after this guy with a PDF format, they're going to have a tall order to fill here.
Well, it's a complicated budget, so it's important that it gets described well to everybody, and I can articulate and answer any questions as needed.
Cut to the chase, I can see it's a reduction year over year, so I'm already...
Yeah.
Are we ready?
We're ready, let's go ahead.
Ian Ellingsworth, Police Chief. I just want to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity, John, to present, and anybody else. The budget, like I said, it is a complicated budget, there's a lot involved, and I appreciate the opportunity to articulate any concerns, or articulate the actual, you know, the complexity of it, as well as answer any questions. And I figured I wouldn't know how to use this thing, but I'm just going to go like this.
Hopefully our TV crew will, yeah, perfect. We're picking it up.
It's a PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Paged out.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. So just, just, I think it's important just to understand the operational budgeting goals of the Police Department. We, the goal is to maintain two officers per shift, every shift. That's our goal. And currently, our staff includes 11 full-time officers, that's myself included, and four part-time officers. What's important about the part-time officer staff right now is that, and this 11 full-time officers includes the officer that we're hiring, so that's inclusive, that's our full staff. Our part-time officers, right now, we really have two that are effectively working, one's on a military leave, and another officer's on a leave as well, so as a result, we have two part-time officers that are working. And over the years, we have heavily relied on part-time officers. When I first became the chief, we tried to maintain 10 part-time officers, and we had 10 full-time officers, and those part-time officers really were a good augment to fill open shifts. Due to some of the unintended consequences of police reform, while there was great reform measures, one of them, and the unintended consequence, was the decline of interest in the field, as well as police recruitment, and in particular, part-time officers is steadily declining. So in fiscal year '21, we had about 4,200 hour, shift hours worked by part-time officers, that declined by 43% in one year during police reform and COVID, to 24, about 2,400. In fiscal year '23, about 20, about 2,000 shift hours were worked by part-time officers. And right now, like I said, we have only two part-time officers effectively working, so they work when they can, they actually work more than I expect, they're trying to help out, but you can only help out so much with only two part-time officers. I expect in fiscal year '25 to get between 1,000 to 1,500 hours worked by part-time officers, and 1,500 is, that's asking a lot. Who knows? Maybe I'll get a part-time officer, that, I have two open positions right now that we put out, we've gotten some expressed interest in it, and who knows, maybe perhaps I'll find that unicorn in the forest that actually wants to work a lot, and as a part-time officer, and work more hours, but I expect 1,200 hours is what I really reasonably expect to get out of this, out of fiscal year '25, out of part-time officers. That 1,200-hour number is key, because that's going to infect, that's going to impact overtime, and explain why my overtime budget has increased so much over the last past, couple of past years. So for a part-time officer to become efficient with regards to wage savings versus operational expenses, and what I mean by that is, it costs money to train them, it costs money for their equipment, they have to work at least 6.5 shifts a year, and that's zero, they zeroed out. Anything over 6.5 shifts a year, we actually, there's a, there's a cost benefit with them as far as it outweighs their operational expenses. So what I prefer is to at least get one shift a week, that's what my expectation is, maybe, maybe two a month, but sometimes that's difficult as well, they all have other jobs and lives as well. So I, my budget planning process, I do a zero-based budgeting process, and for anybody in the public that's not aware of what that is, I start from ground zero. I start from zero, I basically put last year's budget aside, and I start from zero, and I work all the way up to see what the numbers are. I do that because I feel it's more accountable to the taxpayers, and I... bit older, I have a cruiser right now in the shop, and the estimated repair is $2,500 for a water pump that needed to be replaced, so those are just costs that I, with the variable costs, what I do is I try to go back several years and I average, or timeframes, and I average, and that's how I come up with the variable costs. So we'll go over my regular wages account. This right here is how I complicate an officer, a full-time officer's salary, so let me see if this will point here, I don't know if anyone can, can anybody even see that?
Yep.
Or should I use my mouse? So you'll see that for this particular officer, there's two columns, this column and this column. This column right here is, so, police officers, I'm sorry?
Would you mind using the mouse, the people at home?
Sure, yeah, if that, if that works better, sure.
Yeah.
Yep. So you have two columns right here, and the reason for the two columns is, the police officers get step increases every year. And so this first column here, that's his pay rate, for this timeframe, his step increases on 2/4, which is February 4th, this officer gets a step increase, that's where this column comes into place. So that wage is factored into about 52.2 weeks of the year, and you come up with that salary range for that percentage of the year, it goes through this, I split the vacation up, he has 21 days vacation, I split it up between the year, and this is for about 42% of the year, you get that for his, his base salary, and then just down below here is education incentive, he has a bachelor's degree, and it's 10% of his, his base salary. So that's how that comes up. And if I'm going too fast or going too slow, I don't want to do death by PowerPoint, so please, just give me the nod, you know, Chris just telling me, hey, get going, all right?
It's fine.
So what is important here is, this is for part-time, we talked about the part-time coverage, so accrual shift coverage, so that's the officers that have the benefits. So totals, those are all the totals, right here you see here, those are the total, for all the full-time employees, those are the total hours of accrual that they have per year that they can use.
This is for the 10 people?
This is for the 10 police officers, the 10, the 11 full-time police officers. So therefore, I do not backfill whenever there's, again, the goal is two officers per shift. So if I have two officers per shift, and let's say there's three officers working that shift, typically on the day shift, if I'm working, and Lieutenant Grober, and we have a patrol officer working, if Lieutenant Grober has to use a personal day, we don't backfill that, we have two officers on, so we'll never backfill if there's two officers on. So, the way that works is approximately 630 vacation hours won't be backfilled, 152 personal hours won't be, and 112 sick day hours won't be backfilled. And that's important when it comes to how I come up with the part-time officers' wage, wages with respect to their 1,200 hours that they typically can work. So this is the part-time officers. So, out of the 1,200 hours, let's say typically they'll work, we have open weekend shifts, there's 68 open shifts on the week, weekend day shifts, that's a Saturday or Sunday day shift, because I work on administrative schedule, and as well as Lieutenant Grober, who's a court officer, and contractually, if he's a court officer, he works an administrative schedule.
Chief, if you wouldn't mind explaining the, the different shift times?
Sure. The shifts are, they 8 to 4:00 PM, 4:00 PM to midnight, and midnight to 8:00. And for all those shifts, we, the goal is to have two officers on per shift. There's call for service, it's also officer safety, and that's the standard that we've, we've kept for, for a very, very long time, as, within the police department.
That could be a full-time and a part-time together?
Yes, yes, full-time or part-time. And prior to police reform, part-time officers always had to work with a full-time officer, but now that all the officers are getting certified through the Bridge Academy, that, that, that extra training that made them qualified as a full-time officer, so long as that part-time officer has enough experience administratively and operationally, two part-time officers can work together as well.
Okay.
So as you go down, let's say that's 544 hours, if, we usually have an officer that can work some, a Saturday or Sunday day shift, so that's 544 hours of the 1,200 part-time officers that can be used. The rest of these hours, some of these hours you'll see down below, the 16 hours, this is all training, these are off, this is the money I've got to train on the officers, the hours I have to train them. Firearms training, taser training, the staff meetings, based on some of the hardships that we had, we haven't had a staff meeting in a while, I, that's unfortunately very discouraged, but, you know, you have to meet, you have to work within your means. Polls and elections, I didn't even put that in there because we haven't been able to get anybody to work part-time for polls and elections, we're just filling it with, with officers that are working, or if we don't have enough to do that, we, we fill it with overtime. Roll call, that's part of their contract, any officer that's working a shift, they're required to come in 15 minutes early, they get 15 minutes extra roll, roll call. Part-time coverage, other, we don't have that, these were all, these were all categories that I've had used in the past and I haven't filled in, in this year, or oops, or last year. Let's see, how do I go back? Okay. Vacation cover, if they cover 400 hours of vacation, officers' vacation, now we're at 900, well, no, yeah, 944 hours of their 1,200 hours. Sick day cover, let's just say no, because sick day is usually part-time, if somebody calls out sick, there's, there's, it's, it's within hours of their shift, and that part-time officers usually don't have the time to plan. Personal day cover, same thing, it's not, it's not scheduled, usually, they have, most personal time is used within 72 hours per contract, if, as long as they ask for the personal day within 72 hours, I have to give it to them, so they don't have planning there. And holiday cover, that's scheduled, so that's 256 hours, so that is, based on my estimation of, of the 1,200 hours, I think that part-time officer's gonna work this year, based on the trend that we're seeing, that's where I see it, that's where I see it happening. So that total part-time wages comes up to, down below in this right corner here, is $36,315, and some change. So some additional wage computations, we have holiday hours paid to officers not working the holidays, so full-time officers get paid holidays, they have a rotating schedule, a four and two, short of myself and, and the court officer and Lieutenant Grober, they work a four and two. So that means four days on, two days off, and how that works is, their days, their cycle changes every week, so one week they might have a Wednesday, Thursday off, the next week they have a Tuesday, Wednesday, and so on, and so every six weeks, they get a full weekend off, a Saturday and Sunday, every six weeks. So if their day off falls on a holiday, they get that paid holiday, they get eight hours of straight time paid holiday. So that's where that figure comes from, that's the $14,000, a $14,000 figure right there, I'm sorry that this is as small as it is. Shift differential pay, again, that's, that's that fixed, that's that fixed expense that, you know, that's a definitive right there, because they're, by, by contract, they get shift differentials. Officer in charge, that is a variable, and so I used the previous years here to figure out how many times an officer has, a, a non-ranking officer's been in charge of the shift, and we did the average, and that's what that number comes from. Field training, same thing with field training, if there's an officer training, they get an extra percentage in their pay, and as a result of that, it's, they get the 7% extra, and it's about that extra. And then shit, weekend shift differentials, that's a fixed cost, we know how many weekends, we know how many hours they're gonna be working on the weekend, so that's a definitive number right there. Any questions thus far?
No.
So, here we go, so this is the total police wages, so as far as wages go, this is the breakdown of what I just went over, all the wages you have. Now, we also have an administrative assistant, that we've recently, that I share with the fire department, the custodian, that we share within other town departments, that's the education incentive, so that's the percentage that officers with a degree in criminal justice, they get their extra education incentive, and then these are the other figures. That amounts to the regular wages, is, is for regular wages, that's that number there. So overtime wages account, this is, this is a hard one, this has been increasing steadily as a result of the lack of part-time officers being able to work again from, you know, three years ago, working 14, I'm sorry, over 4,000 hours, to now, we're lucky if we get 1,200 hours, there's a significant difference, and you'll see, and you'll see this in this, this section. So just going back through there, I, I kind of went over this earlier about the amount of hours that need to get paid, so that last sentence there I think is important, that we went over the top part of this year, but there, it says if part-time officers work a total of 1,200 hours, 1,200 per hour, should be hours per year, the remaining approximate 17, 1,770 hours would be required to be filled by overtime at median rate of 56.78, that's the median overtime rate of a, of a full-time officer right now. That's 100,000 in itself, over 100,000 in overtime wages, that's where this number comes from if you're looking at the overtime. Again, this is trying to meet that goal of making sure we have two officers on a shift, that's why, that's why we're here.
So, at what, at what point do you get to the, the table flip where you might go to 12 full-time officers and have a rotating officer or a floating officer? Because you've got almost 1,800 hours there.
We're working on that, actually, that, so this right now is based on our officer that we plan on hiring, working a two and two, working a two midnight shift and two evening shifts. So whenever there are three officers on that shift, and somebody takes it off, that, again, we don't backfill, so that's...
This is the 11th.
This is the 11th officer, yes, I'm sorry, yes, this is the 11th officer, so that takes into account. So at some point, for that to happen, we'd have to acquire either more part-time officers or more, probably about three more full-time officers to actually reduce our overtime significantly. So here's some of the additional overtime wages, so if you look in here, this is that, that day shift coverage, well, there's no overtime, because let's, let's presume that the, the part-time officers are working that. This is the remaining vacation day cover, sick day cover, personal day cover, holiday cover, and this is, again, this is on that median overtime rate, that's the median Annual in-service, I don't send them to in-service now, we're doing it for cost savings, where they do it online. Court, we, you know, court is, 17 hours is an average, that's based on fiscal year '23 and '24. Professional development training, I don't have anything that's online, I'll do it as much as I can online, that could be a cost through expenses, but not as far as wages, they can do it online. First responder training, that's mandatory, they have to have the training and CPR training, that's seven officers, why is it seven officers? Because we'll do it when four other officers are working, myself and the day shift, so the other, the only officers that are actually coming in to train will, will be doing the trainings, we'll do it, we try to schedule it on a shift where the most officers are actually working their regular shift. So that's why there's only seven officers there. School lockdown drills, the school has to have them, it's required. Firearms training, again, you have eight officers there, the reason eight is, one is gonna be a, the actual training officer that does it, and again, that, that's while they're working the shift. Taser training, that's a requirement, same thing, semi-annual staff meetings, I don't have it here, because I, I took it out, because we haven't had one in about, I'd say, two and a half, two and a half, maybe three years, and we really should, and every time I plan on it, what happens is, as you know, for the last two years, I've had to come back to the, to the town to ask for interdepartmental transfers, because my, my overtime wages are so, so stretched. So, this is the various expense accounts that I have, and the explanation of those. So our building expenses, janitorial supplies, that's based on six months of fiscal year '24, that's the most accurate I could do it, so about $1,500 a year. Electric, that's based on the calendar year, not fiscal year, because I was able to do it through the calendar year. Charter and spectrum, charter spectrum cable, that increased significantly because we had to increase our bandwidth, I believe, and we, no, we needed a static, static IP, and we always had a dynamic one, and we had not had an upgrade in so many years that the upgrade was significant to get this, they had to upgrade everything else. So that's, 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 that's what that is now, $208 a month, it used to be, I think, 111. Oil, gas, and electric, same thing, based on the calendar year '24. Fire extinguisher inspections, that's for insurance purposes, we have to have that, that was based on fiscal year '24. General supplies and incidentals, that's $500. Water department is based on fiscal year '23, that should be '24, that's, that's '24. Septic service is about $550, I haven't been able to do that because of, you know, unfortunately, some building expenses have caused me to use funding elsewhere. Furnace service, our custodian asks that we maintain that, for their new furnaces, so we maintain those filters regularly, per his request, and we make sure that we do that, so that's a, and that's a definitive, that's, that's right out of Amazon, $58, as I was searching this. Trash disposal, that's current. Water coolers, that's a fixed expense, and that's how much it is based on WB Mason right now, and the water coolers are $8.99 a month.
So, Ian, a couple things, on, on things like furnace service and whatever else, do you have maintenance contracts for those, or are they?
No, we have, Dave, the custodian, who has quite a bit of experience in custodial duties, that's what he did professionally, he feels confident that he can take care of the furnaces, and, and a lot of it just comes down to the cleaning of, the, the routine cleaning of those filters.
Okay. And the trash disposal is what, to go from...
That's the highway department, the highway department covers our trash disposal.
To go to the transfer station?
To go to the transfer station, yes, so they charge, let's see here, they charge...
About $120 or something?
Yeah, $4.7161 a quarter.
And do you actually pay that?
Yes.
Do you actually turn it over?
Yes.
Because I know other departments have it in their budget, but they don't actually give it to the highway department.
Uh, no, well, what happens is, Bradley, will just take it right out of my, my building expenses quarterly.
Okay.
And has, has the electric cost gone up over the last year or two then, this 13...
Yes, yes, that's gone up, yes, and that's, again, that's based on the, the calendar year, because I didn't want to do fiscal year, because I haven't really met the fiscal year of it, so that's the calendar year.
Does it account for your portion of the cowplops?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So, these are, this is some, some more, now, these are the police department expenses, that was building expenses, these are the general police expenses. So my in-service in the hotel, it's in Norwood every year, if you've ever driven to Norwood, Massachusetts, you can't, it's very difficult to commute, that's a tough place to commute every day, so I, that's, that's what that is for. Officer in-service, that's online. Officer professional development, that is, if I were to send somebody to a class, again, I've been doing that online, but we also have to buy those online classes, right, you know, that's, that's something that we have to buy. So that's where the overtime doesn't account into that, but the expense does. Uniform allowance, that's contractual, if you have 11 full-time officers, $1,000 apiece for, for the full-time, and for the four part-time, 600, that's contractual. EMT research classes, we have four officers that are EMTs. Cruiser repair and maintenance, not specified, in, further specified, that's, that's part of that, that $2,500, you know, bill that I'll be paying in the next week from that, that cruiser, so that's for just maintenance, that is not such as tire replacement or oil changes, and that come, you'll see that future, as we proceed. Cruiser oil maintenance, we get it, that's a fixed rate, 7142. Cause I didn't want to do fiscal year because I haven't really met the fiscal year of it. So that's the calendar year.
Does it account for your portion of the cowplops?
Yes, yes. So these are, this is some, some more. Now, these are the police department expenses. That was building expenses. These are the general police expenses. So my in-service in the hotel, it's in Norwood every year. If you ever driven to Norwood, Massachusetts, you can't, it's very difficult to commute. That's a tough place to commute every day. So I, that's, that's what that is for. Officer in-service, that's online. Officer professional development, that is if I were to send somebody to a class. Again, I've been doing that online, but we also have to buy those online classes, right? You know, that's, that's something that we have to buy. So that's where the overtime doesn't account into that, but the expense does. Uniform allowance, that's contractual. If you have 11 full-time officers, a thousand dollars apiece for, for the full-time and for the four part-time, 600, that's contractual. EMT research classes, we have four officers that are EMTs. Cruiser repair and maintenance, not specified in, further specified. That's, that's part of that, that $2,500, you know, bill that I'll be paying in the next week from that, that cruiser. So that's for just maintenance. That is not such as tire replacement or oil changes and that come, you'll see that future as we proceed. Cruiser oil maintenance, we get it. That's a fixed rate, 7142. Pretty much three changes a year for six cruisers. Fleet inspections, that's the Massachusetts state inspections of vehicles. We have to do that. Our cruiser fuel, that again, that's, that varies. So that's an average of fiscal year 23 and six months of fiscal year 24. And that's about 1,900, about, about $1,900 a month. And it varies, it fluctuates, but that's the average. Since we regionalized, we bought mobile data terminals for all the cruisers. And the purpose of that is we want to make sure that the officers stay connected with the regional dispatch center. They threw, an MDT is a mobile data terminal. It's basically a computer in the cruiser. And that allows them to access their records management, update the records management. It also allows them to run plates and use the registry right through their vehicle. And we wanted to make sure that we did that in case there had been, let's just say East Hampton becomes inundated or the officers need to change a log. Our officers can do it right from their cruiser. They can do it right from there. They can actually do, report, uh, report writing right from their cruiser with this. So that's a data plan. The data plan increased. Our post office box, simple as that. Our WEMLEC is Western Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. Annual fees, that's a, a regional council and that is for radios. So if for any reason we lost our radios and we needed to use a regional operational radio, they maintain a radio frequency and it's also for interoperability with other departments. So if, in order to have that frequency, let's say Long Meadow had a stolen car, they would broadcast that stolen car on WEMLEC and WEMLEC. Then all the departments in the area would know that it was a stolen car. So that's what that's for. Western Mass Chiefs Association membership, that's based on fiscal year 24. That's a membership for that. That's a very important membership because when you go to these meetings, you learn a lot of, of information and some current events that's going on in the legislature as well. The International Chiefs Association memberships, again, that's just for the $240. I get a lot of literature out of that and it helps with planning or, or dealing with current trends. And MCOPA is Mass Chiefs of Police Association, annual fees. You'll see that that's a lot higher. We have an attorney that's assigned to that. And that's an attorney that I often will, will use before I have to go to town council. Let's say it's, I have an inquiry about a public records request. Well, I can go to the, the chief's attorney versus use town councils. So that $900 is well worth it. And NESPEN is New England State Police Intelligence Network. And that's a hundred dollars and that allows access to records throughout the state or actually throughout the whole region. And you'll see that that total is 60,094. That's part one of, of police expenses.
And Ian, under those, I don't know about the NESPEN, but the, the three before that though, aren't, aren't those contractual?
Oh, in my contract, I believe, I believe, yes. Not the IACP, but I believe the Western Mass and the Mass Chiefs are. Expense for part two of three, here's the copiers and printer paper. That's just an average. Color toner, you might ask, why do we need color toner? Well, there's criminal investigations that it's important that when we submit the cases to the DA's office that they have, they have color and, and people can see the actual, the reality of, of perhaps a scene or a bruise or, or injury. The black toners, just for our, our normal printers. Media storage, that's our media storage that we typically use. Labels, folders, new employee psych tests. So we try, pretty much, it seems like we're hiring either part-time or full-time every year to, to officers. So part of post, which is the peace officers standards and training, that's part of that police reform. For every hire, you have to do a psych test. We always did one anyway, pre-post, but you have to do it now. That's $500 a test. Medical evaluations, that is required through post. And, but, so that's a medical, the medical evaluation. Now, when you go to the next column over, the PAT, that's a physical aptitude test. That is not required by post. That's why it's not there. I don't intend on putting anybody through the academy as long as I can get, if we have this latest hire and I don't lose anybody, we'll be lucky. I, we're fortunate enough to have our, our, our wages competitive. And I think that's very helpful for recruitment and retention. Equipment for the academy, not necessary. Medical equipment, you know, we always have to replace D-FIBs and gloves and so forth. Ballistic vests, it's about a thousand dollars a vest. So again, two officers, they need ballistic vests. They're supposed to be form-fitting. Crime scene processing equipment, I reviewed what we have. We don't need any more. Food reimbursements, if somebody has to go out for training, there's food reimbursement. They're, they're allowed per contract to get reimbursed. And then identification cards, they expire, some expire as well as the new officers have to get them. They're $15 apiece. And police expenses, the last is for firearms qualifications. Like I said, that's a fixed cost. That's coming right, a lot of those costs right there are, are government costs. So that's how much we use for, for training of our officers. Taser qualifications, same thing. So every time they were trained with a taser, it's, it's, the cartridge is $40. That's, it's pretty expensive. The RAD membership, that's for rape, aggression, defense. We have an officer that's certified in that. We like to keep them certified in case that becomes a program that we want to implement. Radar calibrations, that's, that's based on our cruisers. We have radar units that need to be calibrated every year for, for purpose, number one, for accuracy. We want to make sure they're accurate. But if we don't have those calibrations and for some reason something they were to go to court on and the cause for the stop was for speeding, it's important to make sure that they were calibrated. So we have to have those certifications. Language link is an interpreter service. Obviously that's very important for us. It's only a hundred dollars unless you use it a little bit more, but annually it's a hundred dollars and we maintain that. Cruiser tires, so for this next fiscal year, three cars will need replacements. It's about $700 a car. And then incidental miscellaneous office supplies. Labor law poster, I have to get one every year. DTS scheduling, DTS scheduling is basically shift and detail scheduling. That's a new expense and that, that is based on the number of officers you have in your department. And we needed to get that as a result of regionalizing, regionalizing with East Hampton because our dispatchers used to be the ones scheduling details. And because East Hampton dispatchers do not schedule East Hampton details, they're not expected to schedule our details. It is kind of a laborious process. So we, we, uh, we got this DTS scheduling app. And it, and so what happens if a detail comes in, any officer that's on duty can use this app and it sends it out to the, to the officers. Communications, this is something new. I put this in there. If, if it needs to get taken out, that's fine. I understand. In accordance with our intermunicipal agreement with East Hampton, we are in charge of our own radios. So I'm concerned that should there be any major issue with our radios and we don't have anything budgeted for that in the next fiscal year, where am I going to draw that money from? So it could be reduced, we could leave it, we could take it out. But just know that through our intermunicipal agreement, that is something that I have a concern over. IT expenses, uh, like I said, I, I, I wish I could put more into that, but I realize that, you know, um, that's not a lot. But it's something that we need to have at least something in there because my officer that is the most IT savvy, the technology advances are just becoming so advanced that he's having a hard time keeping up. You know, and I can, I can, I can't even use this thing, you know? So you see the total of police expenses for that page. This is equipment maintenance. So our, the dispatch center has our, our computer aided dispatch and police records. That's our police records are, and that's our logging system. So we have to maintain, we maintain this, this contract every year. So for fiscal year 24, that's how much it was. We had to add the additional four MDT licenses to it. That's why it's increased a little bit. Those again, those are the mobile data terminals, that's the laptops in the cruiser. That's why that's increased. Our copier lease has gone down because, well, the cost efficiency. Radio consoles, that is just regular radio maintenance. Based on the contract that we've had and maintained from our previous radios. That is with Goose Town, that's, that's a standard. I, that's the contractual price for this year. Generator maintenance is 1,500. That's for a contract. CHSB is the Criminal History Systems Board. So for us to be able to use the Criminal History Systems Board, which is basically, you know, CGIS, if you ever heard of Criminal Justice Information System, that's, that's our agreement. We have to pay that every year. All-traffic equipment contract, what that is, is when you see our speed signs, we have a current speed sign on Line Street, that's a solar speed sign. We have one that we'll be deploying recently in, in the near future because the weather's getting better. That's a more mobile one. We put that for complaints. And we also have two message boards that we maintain. Those message boards we used for town events. Well, in order to maintain, in order to retrieve data as well as program those, you have to have the, the contract. Our fingerprint scanner, there's no annual service for that. Task description plan, we don't need. And so that total is 29,806. This is the total budget summary. Which you'll see in your packet, that's the total. Questions and comments?
I have a question. So the 1.3 million-
Yes.
Is your zero base approach?
Yes.
So, which is, for reasons related primarily to dispatching, it's $35,000 under budget year over year comparative.
I'm sorry, sir.
Your expiring budget is, is 35,000 higher than what you're asking for here?
Yes.
Yeah. So that being said, I don't know that there's anything we can do about this, but are there, are there any things that you're currently not doing that you'd want to take advantage of or try to implement to improve? Cause I mean-
What I really, I, I'm a, a very big proponent of, well, communication within the department. You know, um, I really would like to have more department meetings. And it's, and I have not been able to have them in a while. And as we all know, communicating through email is not an effective form of communication. And-
Prior to the pandemic, when you had them, how many did you have?
We tried to have two a year and all in-person at the station, everybody, you know.
Before you finish, also bring up the data effect of the repeat risk you want to mount.
Yes.
It's not budgetary, but-
Yep. So we had about, we tried to have two a year, two a year. And also clearly I'm a very large proponent of training. And online training is not the same as in-person training. And it would be nice to see officers being able to go to specialized training as well. For instance, we had a drone donated to us, not a very sophisticated one, but enough to, to use for purposes that the police department could use or even the town could use. That is, an officer needs to get sent or needs training to get certified to use that and through the FAA. Well, this officer in order to do it, he's, he's doing it on his shift and he's, he's, he's working on his, throughout his shift and it's, there's some difficult aspects of this. It would be nice just to send him to an eight-hour course and have it done in eight hours. And, you know, where he can actually prepare for the test. So training, I have a newly acquired officer. And this officer is female. And obviously when you have certain victims, it's best to have female officers, interview them and, and that training is specific. And, you know, it'd be nice to, to develop this officer into that, that, into that role. And that, again, that costs money, not only the class, but also the overtime. So a lot of my training, I, I've, I've had to cut back on training and I, and I don't want-
So I guess I would suggest that in your, maybe you come up with a number and we put it in budget two, the wishlist. I mean, is it a miscellaneous category under? Cause it sounds like it's all payroll related at the moment. What, if you have, if you have a staff meeting, it's, it's, it's the pay, right? I mean, obviously if you send somebody for training, there's probably a registration fee or something.
There, there, yes, there's a fee, there's a fee for especially certain specialized training.
You know, but is, is there, and I don't know. But I mean, is there a miscellaneous compensation line item that you put a token 5,000 in? And see if it, you're the first department up, so I don't know.
No, no, I can certainly, I can certainly do that.
No promises now.
I'm not making a promise, but if we have-
But your wishlist is a straight, straight line here, so yeah.
I recognize my budget is probably one of the higher, shorter than school, you know, one of the, and I, 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 that's why it's so important I was here tonight and I was able to articulate why it is what it is. But I'm also, I realize that there's other needs in town and I'm not, I want to make sure that I'm not gluttonous, you know?
No, and that's why I would suggest, and I appreciate you're not putting it in your first request, but in the wishlist.
Sure. I can come up with something, sure.
Cause on the, on the wishlist, it's a straight line from, from the previous.
Yes.
So you haven't really added anything additional in the wishlist, yeah, so.
My, my thoughts on this budget is through what you've said, I feel that this is a bare bones budget, but, but a thoughtful budget. You've put a lot of consideration in each one of these lineums to get them to the point where you're efficient with the money that you're, you're asking for. So everything, I'd say thank you for putting this forward. This seems very well thought out and it's good.
I wouldn't even ask how many hours it took you to put this budget together because this, this is-
You know, I've had the templates, I've had the templates about just finding the data. I've had the template now. I've been working on this template since I became chief and it, and I, I fine tune it every time, every year. So I'm able to fine tune it. So, yeah, it's, it, uh, there's a packet of information in there that I have to use, that I have to go by, you know, as my go-bys to make sure that I'm, you know, where I research.
But really, I mean, you've gotten it right down to the, you know, practically to the paperclip level here in terms of your expenses.
It's a double-edged sword because it's very transparent, but it also doesn't allow much of a buffer when something occurs.
Absolutely, yeah, it's quite true.
And you could tell when it was like two weeks to budget deadline because you could see the stress mounting on it. So it's, it's, he's got it down, but it's not all that easy and simple for him to put together.
Undone it, undone it. So a couple, a couple of questions, anybody else? So you mentioned a female officer briefly. So suppose you had a, I don't know, you had a rape situation or something like that and you'd want the female officer to perhaps interview the, the-
Yes.
The victim as such. And that person wasn't on shift, would you call the female officer in?
Absolutely.
But then she would be entitled to overtime?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be part of that investigations column, overtime investigations column. So I have an officer that's certified in rape investigation, but it's, it's, it's a male officer because that's all we had. The app, you know, for certain situations, that, that would be the better option. Oftentimes we do, you know, because of that, we ask if they, you know, I don't want to get into too much detail for something like this, but we'll ask if they're comfortable, you know, talking with a male officer. And if they're not, then we reach out to a, a very well-respected state police investigator that I have, that, that works with my detective very well and she'll come and assist.
Awesome.
But we can put through the charges, but she'll do the interview.
Okay. And then in terms of the officers on shift, so the goal is, is two per shift and that's even daytime. So two, so if you're on duty as well, you're, you're more or less at the station and others are patrolling or you're out patrolling as well?
It all depends. So, you know, if I have, let's say it's me, my lieutenant and a patrol officer, the patrol officer's out in the, out in the street and, but we, we go on calls for service if necessary. So that's the, the, the goal is always to have two officers. But if somebody would let, like I said, if somebody, let's say Lieutenant Grober, had to use a personal day, we don't backfill that. You know, the goal is even if I'm working and I have to, you know, I've had in my years as a chief, have had to do many arrests because I was the person available.
And with that in mind and the shortage you've been dealing with, have you had time? Assuming you've had times where you've only had one person on shift?
We, we have had.
You had shifts that have not done what you've hoped to have?
Last year in particular, at the beginning of the fiscal year was extremely difficult. We had failing medical leave. We had an officer that was activated in the military. We had a medical leave and we had a resignation. So we had four of our full-time officers gone. And not only was it becoming very burdensome on the, or I should taxing, if you will, on our overtime account. Like I couldn't do it, but it was hurting, the officers were being forced. So we were trying to maintain that goal of two officers per shift. But the officer, you could only do that so much, especially when you're working a four and two shift. But the officer, you could only do that so much, especially when you're working a four-and-two shift, and the, these patrol officers don't get weekends off and they're getting forced in on a Saturday that they only get every six weeks. That was not becoming a good, good for morale. So, through analytical and anecdotal process, we went through stats and figured out, okay, well, this is the time where it's probably safest to only have one officer on. And we were doing that. Not a comfortable feeling. It's not.
It would be an interesting statistic to understand, and you may already have it, is your min-max and average number of hours your officers have to work per week to make, just to keep an eye on being sure no one's getting burnt out, or-
Absolutely, yeah. And that, that's why we, that was part of the reason. Not only was it for the money, but we just couldn't afford it, but it was, you know, you could see the frustration. They recognized that that's their job, they recognized that they have to do it, but it was getting to the point where officers were getting forced, sometimes even on their day off. So again, it's on a Saturday, they don't get an officer, and there's, and I would contribute as well, when I could. You know, I would come in on a Saturday, I'd come in on a holiday for officers, just to try to give people breaks. But, right now, you know, our staffing looks like it's going to be at level, and I can already see our overtime being reduced, our overtime expenses being normal. But you never know, you never know. And what comes with longevity, are officers that have a lot of time off, they've accrued a lot of time off, they're also getting older, and, you know, they're more susceptible possibly to, you know, disease or injury or whatever it may be, so there's, there's a lot of variables. That's why that overtime is such a variable expense. I can't just, I can't pin it.
Chris?
Yeah.
So, one of the, one of the new things that's in this budget that you hadn't had before was your admin support.
Yes.
Shared person. How's that working out?
Excellent. She goes in between the police department and the fire department almost every day. I haven't heard anything from Chief Fasoli as, as any, I haven't heard any concerns from him.
Yeah.
I can say specifically through me, it's working out great.
Right. And one of the goals or objectives of this was to try and move some administrative stuff off your shoulders. So that's been successful?
Yes. I have not had to work on payroll on a Sunday night since she's become the admin.
It's her chairs.
That's a very thoughtful presentation. It obviously requires a lot of data to reprogram your template every year. I particularly liked that you referred to it as a management tool that you can refer to and further refine your forecasting and your management activities.
Yeah, that's great.
I think just because we've had such a, you know, focus this year on the whole dispatch communication situation, so just looking at the overall cover sheet here, so it looks like with communication wages and expenses, excuse me, that would have been about 160,000 are their amounts?
So, I actually came up with some-
Or different, because-
So, this is, I anticipated this. So, if you were just, then this is kind of rough. So, in fiscal year '25, that's my request right here, right? And if there's, this was kind of for notes for me, but if there's any spelling areas, please don't hold it against me.
Right.
So fiscal year '25, that's my ask. If we didn't have regionalization, an estimated total budget would have been about, this is, so now we have dispatch inclusive, it would be about 1.4 million, and that's with a 2.25% increase overall for the fiscal year '24 budget, right, projecting. And I did that because the police got, would be getting a 2.5% increase. Remember, let's go back, they didn't get their, their, they didn't get their change in working conditions increases. So we're saying, if this never happened, we would have been at about 1.4 million. And that is $72,000 greater than we are with regionalization now, right? So, fiscal year '24, police and dispatch, that was, that's what I requested for this fiscal year. And then, that was the previous fiscal year. And as you can see my overtime, as I go down here, if I can. So, how my, in fiscal year '23, I spent 123,000 on overtime. And that was, that was that year that was very difficult with the loss of a lot of employees and leaves and so forth. And $41,000 was through interdepartmental transfers. I was able to do that because I didn't have the, the actual police officers working, so I took it out of regular wages and put it towards overtime wages. And then fiscal year '24, I'm already at 96,000. And with 27,000 interdepartmental transfer meeting at the special town meeting.
So I just wrote for the other members of the select board and our new town administrator, how much, how much are we, we're getting 100% reimbursement, starting next year?
This year.
For year one?
Year one, so next fiscal, this fiscal year '25.
That we're going into.
And we're going into.
Is it a buck 25?
It's 175,000.
Yeah. So I almost think that either a footnote needs to go in the budget, because this is going to run for three years, so some of us will be on second terms, or maybe not even sitting here. Yeah. May not remember all this stuff. I almost think we need to put the 175 in the budget as an expense line item, but then print in the revenue line item, that the state is going to pay it, although it's not going to flow through, so I don't know how Bradley's going to want to see it. But somewhere in there, I think we need to document that this regional dispatching right now is costing us 175, to which the Commonwealth is going to give us in year one, two, and three, some portion of, so that at year four or five, whenever it is, we're responsible for it. It's not a line that's zero coming in.
Yeah, it's three years at 100%.
50, 25, and then zero.
Yes, so year four, 50, year five, 25. So, I think actually, John, it was you, or maybe Ed, somebody brought up a good idea where, and I was thinking about the 175,000 fee. And I researched last year, I went onto the State 911 Department website this, today actually, in preparation for this, and this is, the reimbursements are based on the developmental grant. And last, the developmental grant for this year is due March 11th, I believe. And it was probably the same time last year, and the awards were given on July 7th. So the award letters were given to all the departments on July 7th. According to our intermunicipal agreement, we're required to pay quarterly.
On July 15th.
On July 15th, so that's about 43,500. So, perhaps, you know, this is outside my arena, but perhaps that 43,500, that's a lot less, knowing that, and I feel confident that we're going to get the reimbursement. I don't have any reservations on that. That, instead of appropriating 175,000 this year, appropriate for that first quarter. I don't know, it's just something that you throw it out there.
But, I mean, I think it's, I think it's net, if we anticipate the, we should, it's an expense that we have, so the expense should be in there. I think much like our cherry sheet money, in this particular case, we should anticipate that money coming in and listed on the revenue side, but somehow have a footnote there so that year four and five, we know what the adjustments are going to be.
Yeah. This is more outside my wheelhouse, this is your wheelhouse, so I don't-
I think it's more in the transparency side.
I don't know how you'd put it in columns and have the thing balance out on a balance sheet, but a big footnote that says there's a structured agreement that changes each year. It's not a springing obligation, it's a known liability in year four.
It's just further down, just further down the line, but yeah. But it's nothing we could put in the reserve fund, I don't think, right? That would not be a good place to house it, so where would you put it?
I mean, theoretically, you can account for it through, trying to think, 21, 24, 28, probably 28, grant, much like a reimbursable grant, you could do that.
Yeah. Because I'm kind of thinking it's along the lines of like busing transportation, right? We budget to pay 100% of the bill, knowing that we're going to get some percentage back from the state down the road, but we have to-
Oh, flight, yeah.
Right. But if they don't give us, we have to pay the bill.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
So.
So, so back on that, I'm just, I'm looking, I don't know-
Yeah, I'm sorry, you want me to bring you back up?
I just wanted to be sure that I understood it.
Want me to bring you back up?
Well, if you have this page, that's fine. I don't know that I have all the same pages here, but I got this one anyway. So for fiscal '23, the way I'm reading it-
Chris is looking at the summary Excel sheet that Bradley-
Oh, okay, I don't have that on here, no, no.
What came where. But anyway, it looks like 258,000 for communication wages in '23.
That sounds about right. I think it was 265 in fiscal year '24.
Okay. 260, so what's saying here is 145, that's where I was confused.
Savings?
Uh, you know, I can-
We're looking at communication wages.
Right, but then we start cutting it, taking money out, because we're in the process of shutting down. This is this year, right?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just trying to understand, I guess, the quote-unquote "the cost savings" of having done the regionalization, so maybe that's what your other slide showed better than what page I'm looking at here.
Fiscal year '24, according to what Bradley will be connecting to the force.
The amended budget I had here was 145, but that-
The original budget was for wages, 275,579.
265.
Expenses was 12,208.
So 277 altogether, basically, thereabouts. For fiscal '23, four.
That's for fiscal '24.
Fiscal '24. Okay. And then we've been drawing down on that before, we used part of that and then we regionalized. So that's why I'm seeing the 145. Okay, now I got that, okay. But with all that, and with some of the increases you've talked about, the year-to-year change from last year to this year looks like about a $35,000 reduction somehow in this spreadsheet here.
Yep.
In spite of all these other changes, but yeah.
Right, because part of, part of that $100,000 difference that you're seeing there,
Yeah.
when we agreed to the-
Impact bargaining changes to the police union, yes, increasing their wages.
That was the funding source to move the wages.
And that affects, that affects education incentive, that affects the overtime rate, it affects everything.
No, I would just foresee, you know, questions like, so have we saved anything by doing this regionalization? I mean, I would hear that from a citizen.
We did, but also think about the capital savings.
Yeah.
Right? So we no longer have to replace the radio councils in dispatch for probably, I think they're due for replacement in about five years, and that would be probably close to 500,000.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And it wasn't all about money savings, right? We didn't make that just to save money, that switch.
So, yeah, okay, good. Well, a lot to think about, for sure, but thank you for-
One of the things Ed asked me to discuss too, just briefly, one of the, as we were transitioning to regionalization, I've always expressed a concern. Now, there's been a concern about the repeater for the fire department, it's located at the highway department. With the monies that we had left through the prior reimbursements from the grants that I had, that we had in account, we were able to pay for that. And the, both the police repeater, as well as the fire department's repeater, are going to be now on the top of the mountain where they should be.
Okay.
So, the fire department on Mount Tom, so-
And accessible?
Accessible, yes.
Not in that other stray location that you couldn't get to?
No, no, they're actually moving the police departments as well.
Oh, good.
So we were able to do that with funding through those grants, through what we had through reimbursements. And that's expected to be done by April 1st. our topography in town just couldn't, you know, to have a repeater where it was is not, is not appropriate. We needed to have it moved.
That's great.
This will mean a big improvement in some of the spots in town that those radios wouldn't work in before. So this will, this will be a major improvement too.
Absolutely.
The communications for both police and fire.
Right, that's great, yeah. Wonderful, okay. All right, does anybody have any other questions? Scott, anybody? No? You all right?
You're a great model for others to follow.
No, much appreciated. I'm incredibly detailed and you obviously know your figures inside and out here, so thank you very much for the time and effort to put forth-
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to kind of explain it. I know it's a lot to digest, I just wanted to see if you had any questions.
As you said, it's a complex budget, so I-
Complex, it's always moving.
We heard that, but now we see it as well, I think. So thank you very much. Down to the air filter cost. Yeah, right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Good night, Robert.
All right, so let's pick ourselves back up here to where we are. A few more things to go through.
Finance committee meetings.
Well, the finance committee meeting next time, which should be Thursday, so we're still planning on a hearing on Thursday with finance, and this will be police and highway at that, that presentation. So it'll be only focused on-
Me, fire, highway?
I'm sorry, what did I say? Sorry.
Police.
I'm sorry, fire, no, Ian's done, sorry, poor Ian. Will be fire and highway will be our two budget hearings for this coming Thursday. So it's basically a special select board meeting, hopefully joint meeting with FinCom. We scheduled it because they already had a finance meeting scheduled for the 29th on the books, and so we decided to join into their meeting on that one, but this one maybe just didn't fit everybody's schedule. We didn't want to do it last week because of school vacation and everything that was going on where we thought people might not be available. But we'll, we'll do it, whether, I mean, I'm hoping at least some people can be here. Because it's really easier to hear this in person rather than to sit down and watch it on video and do this. And I want to be sure too, I don't know, some of the slides that Ian had, I'd like to be sure that we all get that presentation, because my package has, doesn't have a lot of that narrative that he had here.
No, we should, we should have some for the, we should have some of the PowerPoint to-
Yeah, so we should have that, and I don't know, I know we got something from Bradley before, which I just wanted to check and make sure that that was what we got, but I wasn't sure that it was, so. Okay, so we will see what we, what we have here coming forward, but I think we will at least have a first one.
All right.
First one done, so that's good news.
Night, Ian.
Night, Ian, thank you. Yeah, so Ed, we were just saying, I think, I don't know on the budget, the package anyway, that we have, doesn't have a lot of the narrative slides that Ian had here. So if we could have a copy of his PowerPoint, because I think, I don't know if he added something different, or I wasn't getting all the pages on the thing that Bradley sent me, maybe. I don't know, we, Bradley sent out requests from-
Well, you're talking two different items. You're talking budget submissions to the town accountant, you're talking a PowerPoint presentation that the department had developed after that.
Right.
Okay. Well, I think the PowerPoint presentation has a lot of narrative in it that I did not see in my my packet, so that's what I think would be helpful for us, because I think that was, you know, just very useful information. I mean, we had all the various pages of the officer calculation and the expense calculation, but his slides that talked about the number of shift hours and all those kinds of things. So, if we could get that, I think that would be extremely helpful.
I can ask the chief for his PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, especially, I'd send it around frankly to finance committee too, because they will really have a lot to catch up on here.
It'll help if they have that handy as they're, as they're watching the video.
Right, so that'll be more useful, I think, for them. Okay, all right. So with that, I think we'll try to pick up on some of the other items here, not too, too, too many to go here. I guess the next one up is I see is charter spectrum contract renewal notification. So, Ed.
Yes, so part of the process is charter spectrum can notify us of their interest to renew, we can notify them within a certain timeframe. We have the letter, they're interested, so we will need to respond to them that, yes, we will be interested in starting and working on the negotiations with you.
So, I have a question, because I, I read that second paragraph a little differently. It sounds like we have, we have the, we can go through the formal process, or they're asking us to waive our right to the formal process and go through the expedited process.
So that's our choice.
It's our choice.
Well, I guess, I, okay, so I don't know the difference between the two.
Yeah.
I don't know if, if somebody can give me a 30-second layman version. Is the formal like a full-blown RFP and goes out to everybody? Or is the shortened version of, A, we're going to give you a 2.5% increase and that's it?
No, we'll find out the technical differences and let you know.
Okay.
And I guess this too, just query it, because this expires now on January 1st, 2027.
Right.
So given the work that we're starting to do with the municipal light plant idea, with the idea of maybe managing our own services, how do we, how do we move forward with both thoughts in mind here?
You would still move forward with this? You're going to have people that even if you develop both?
They may not update.
We want to get people off this.
Yeah, yeah. That'll probably still wave, stay with charter spectrum. You know, you've got, and you'll have, I'm going to call it generationally. You'll have people that will be more comfortable with the cable because of the TV offerings. When, you'll have people that are comfortable with fiber optic broadband options that don't, do not have TV options that are channels that come with them because they're comfortable with streaming. You can, shall we say, count on the fact that if you do develop both, that those fees that you're getting, we are getting back from charter spectrum or if you, or Comcast Xfinity, community from Comcast Xfinity are going to drop. So with that, you will have to keep that in mind of how you might, as a community, provide the cable access. So you might be looking for some fees from a municipal light, local municipal light plant to augment that for cable fees.
So in other words, we would have a parallel system no matter what, probably?
Exactly, yeah.
But just be able to.
And the differences are, it would be eons if ever for, and I won't say never, but it would be a long-awaited process, whether it's charter spectrum, whether it's Comcast Xfinity or whatever, to make an investment in a community to lay out fiber optic. So that's going to be your base, some of your basics differences in the choices along the way, but.
And if I remember, this was a 10-year agreement that's coming toward its end in the next couple of years, right?
That is correct.
Most likely they'd want to do the same term level.
To me, this is an opportunity to break up a monopoly, which causes higher costs for our citizens around internet as well as for cable. So I see this as an opportunity to get some other potentially interest to the parties and see what they can offer and what their costs would be. We should take this as an opportunity to try to benefit our townspeople in terms of cost savings, but also the services that are provided to our towns through these companies. This is a big part of our communication nowadays, so.
And one of the, some of those kind, shall we say, conversations, negotiations, maybe, okay, we're interested, but we want to know what this would look like. We want you to invest and convert our town to fiber optic.
Right.
Down to your round chair.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that perhaps the next time we bring this up, we should do it under executive session, under negotiations where, because then we could get a little deeper set of strategy, be on the same page without a live tape going to who we're going to negotiate with.
Correct.
Yep.
Just a thought.
Good deal, yep.
Cool.
Good point.
Not that I really want another executive session, but.
That's fine.
Do you need a motion to dispose of this? Or was that?
No, it's more informational at this point in time.
Yeah, we'll get that information on the difference between.
We'll get information back on.
Two different processes, so you can make an educated decision on if you really want to waive the formal process or not.
I definitely want to have information before we just blithely waive away a formal process. Shortcut might not be the best, best option for us, so, okay. All right, moving on. Next thing is just relatively simple. This is the time to renew the monarch pledge for the town of Southampton. This is something that we've done for the last three years now. I've passed around information to everybody. This is something that is put out through the National Wildlife Federation and basically just attracting heads of local governments in particular to help save the monarch butterfly, whose population has declined extensively in a number of years. So basically through the pledge, it just has municipalities, cities, other communities in general, committing to create habitat that is, you know, conducive to the monarch butterfly and pollinators and to educate residents in towns and cities about the difference that can make in their communities. So this is something we signed on to in 2021. We've been chipping away at it a little bit. And basically the prime actors in this, as I mentioned in my note, I think, have been this little group of good earth gardeners working in conjunction with park department, highway and.
Water.
Water commission as well. And so various things have taken place with a couple of wildlife, I'm sorry, wildflower demonstration, native plant demonstrations at Labrie Field, working at the watershed protection area on Palmera Meadow Road to let that grow into a natural meadow with less mowing, just mowing a track through it and mowing it down probably once a year, working a bit with Randall on a Nomo May for a couple of sites in town, things like that. So we've made some headway on that and you've got a report in your, in your packet for what had been done last year, and there's just a series of actions. There's 30 different things that you can choose from as to what you want to get involved in, which is anything from seed swaps to encouraging people to plant milkweed, which is the host plant for the monarch butterfly, reducing the amount of mowing that is done, maybe not having quite so many manicured lawns, et cetera. So whatever, it's up to the board whether you think you'd want to continue this.
Make a motion to approve our continuation to support this project and authorize the select board chair to sign off on any required documents on our behalf.
All right.
Second with enthusiasm.
All right, okay. So motion by John Stephen, second, all right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We will take care of that. So there is a nice little webpage, so Southampton is featured on this, and we have our little spot, which I'll pass the webpage around. I might actually post something on our, on our own webpage for that too.
Now the moment of truth.
Yes, so up to our moment of suspense in terms of where we are with our job descriptions in the Collins Center and what the town employees have been reacting to and done with them and what's happening with the compensation classification plan at this point.
They were due back from the department heads today, and I had gotten some back during, up until this time, but not a whole heck of a lot. And then low and behold, right around 4 o'clock and a little after, I started getting emails from different department heads. So I have not had an opportunity to go back in and see actually whose I, whose have been sent to me as of yet and whose have not. But was pleasantly surprised at the flurry of responses back at the, at the end of the day today, so.
Have you heard much commentary in terms of?
I've had, I've had, you know, both and, you know, from individuals that have sent them back and said, we're fine with what they have drafted, have some that have come back with some, some changes to them. I did put it out there because I was asked, because there were some departments that actually either made drastic changes or came up with total new job descriptions between the time that we started this process with Collins Center. And now, so, you know, as, as an example, I was, I was very free to pass along to Kathy for her comments in the Board of Assessors, and the Board of Assessors that I knew that they had worked on, you know, new ones. So rather than going in and trying to, shall we say, cross off and add to the draft from Collins Center, I said, feel, feel free to send back what you've, you know, basically worked on and are familiar with, and I will send that back to the Collins Center. So we've, we've got everything from no comments to, all the way to, you know, here's a totally different, and only in, only in a couple of places, you know, here's a totally different, you know, job, job description. Some of them I felt free that came in, since my successor has a much more HR background than I do. He's been, shall we say, adding what would be my department head comments to some of them that we've had, so.
Good, okay. So the next steps then, these go back to Collins and?
These would go back to Collins. Like I say, probably if I actually have time to come up for air tomorrow or sometime on Thursday, get together with Judy and figure out, actually go over the checklist and see whose we have, whose we don't, and who we have to send out the nasty grams to of saying, okay, you know, the deadline has passed. You know, supposedly you've been actually, you know, anxiously awaiting this. It doesn't become final till we have them all, you know, back in to the Collins Center.
And then they will turn it around with a range of salaries, the compensation?
They would come back with the positions by grades and a range of salaries to, or wages, whatever you want to call it, to go with them, you know, and it won't be by steps. You'll, they'll come back of, okay, these positions fit into grade one, these fit into grade two, blah, 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 however many they separated out into. And for each grade, they will come back with a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum.
So I think the, I guess, I guess the time to sit back is, today's the last day and it's done. So I guess what I'd want to see from this point forward, based on what Ed's saying, is the, I understand a lot of data just came in, so we don't know it now. But I guess before the next regular select board meeting, not Thursday, but two weeks from today, I guess I would want to, I'd want to see a list of who's outstanding, who hasn't responded. Because to Ed's point that he just made, this has, this has been 18-plus months. And they, and everyone knew this was coming back, and everybody knows we want to get this on the budget. And the bylaw says April 1st. So if we're now being held up because a potential department head has had over two weeks and still hasn't responded, at some point, I think, as the ultimate appointing authority, we need to step in and do this because I don't want to be sitting here on April 1st and not have this list to be able to do what we said we want to do for all the other employees.
How about they have it by next week or they show up in person?
Well.
Well, before I leave at 11:59 PM on Thursday, this Thursday, the 29th, even if it's a very rudimentary, you know, list, I will send it out.
You know, and it might come down to, again, once you have time to digest everything that came in, it might just be one or two.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and it may be that, you know, by Monday, there will be more that come in. So I mean, I would certainly expect that if, you know, I'm.
All I want to know is did Madam Chair do yours? Did you submit ours on our behalf? Because I haven't seen it.
So I guess I would totally assume, I'm not, I'm not totally surprised if there's a few stragglers maybe, but I would totally expect that those are in by the end of this week, if not Monday.
Here's the, here's my quick memory, and if I forget anybody, I apologize right now. I believe I have all of the ones from the COA. I believe we have all of the ones from the town clerk's offices, treasurer collector's office, and now the assessors' office. I've got half of the ones from my office.
There's only two employees.
Well, there's also the town administrators, so, yeah. Since the custodian force in multiple departments, I took it upon myself to do that one.
That's good, it sounds like you've got.
I have the accounting offices I know came in. I have most of the highway department, and I'm not going to throw Randall under the bus. Probably the only reason that I don't have all of, or we don't have all of the highway departments because she asked me, well, here are these, what about mine? And I said, I sent that in a separate email. And I goes, and that was actually due back to me last week because you're my direct report. So where my memory is lately and my brain is of getting interrupted a lot, I actually went back in and looked at my sent and had to send it back an apologetic email and said, ah, guess what? No, it was me. I never got around to sending you that, so.
Okay. Well, hopefully, I mean, I fully expect that we will get these in within a few days. I would not expect us to meet on March 12th and have many outstanding ones.
We get the updated, everything's in.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Just waiting on Collins for the.
Yeah, and I would hope that, you know, we would have, you know, sooner than later. I mean, whether it's, I think you'd said by mid-month, something like that.
I would expect after we, you know, we send all of them back to them that we have at least a draft of the final report within a couple of weeks after that, so.
All right. Sure hope so. We need it. Okay. Any other questions about that? All right. Moving on, any further updates? I think we kind of covered things in your report and senior center and public safety building committees. Is there any outstanding things?
I think between my TA report and then your report on those two, I think we've covered just about everything in there.
I think we're still back and forth. There's one more iteration of questions, at least from public safety committee, back to the Labries about.
And that letter is in.
Clarifications in the letters here.
Yeah, in your packets.
It's only five days old.
Yeah, so that's, you know, not, not yet answered, so hopefully we'll get further down the line on that. Okay, all right. Sorry, property acquisition possibilities, that's all kind of tied in together.
Yes.
As we talk about the whole zero college highway, I think we've all agreed that we want to, at least here, not only the price, but get the appraisal done and then see what that comes back and take it to a variety of next steps, which will probably be much more in-depth as we go forward on that. All right, fire chief assessment.
Did you want to reaffirm the authorities and the town administrator and the chair? Or have we effectively transferred all of Ed's authorities to our new town administrator?
I think with the appointment of Scott on the public safety building and senior center building, I mean, as the town administrator and, you know, sort of the head.
So that negotiating role is incidental to the public safety?
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, I mean, I think it would all, I mean, we didn't have a special negotiating committee or anything, you know, developed. It's, the role has been with the town administrator.
The board did vote to authorize the two of you to enter into negotiations.
But I mean, not a, not a bigger committee, so, yeah. I guess I'm going to assume that that transfers on to, on to Scott. Dan?
Just talking about the.
That's what I wanted to telegraph.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, Scott, this is a big one.
Yes, talking about the transfer, as we're talking about the transfer of power here, one of the questions I have is, will Scott have a new email address or would it be the same email address?
Can you use the town administrator email address?
Okay, thank you.
The IT switchover is not just the email address. It's massive because it actually, actually it's the whole Microsoft 365.
Okay.
Account.
I was happy just knowing about the email.
The, Scott will inherit town administrator email account. I have some minor email accounts, which are, is volunteer@townofsouthampton.org, which is for the volunteer applications. There's an ABCC one. There's one for jobs, for job applications. Those are all within my realm. Instead of egibson@townofsouthampton.org, it'll become szbak@townofsouthampton.org. But like I say, it's not just the email address. It is that entire Microsoft 365. But like I say, it's not just the email address, it is that entire Microsoft 365 migration.
So should we, should we just wait until next week to start using new email? Or does townadministrator@...
Just for now, just use the townadministrator@townofsouthampton.org. And that, even if it takes a few days to migrate the whole thing, he has, he knows how to sign in as me and has my passwords. Chris has snapped the whip. I think I've got at least three hours in in the last week making lists of stuff that are pertinent and good knowledge for Scott.
Yeah, no, that's good, much appreciated, yeah. All right, picking back up, fire chief assessment.
Nothing new since our last meeting because of the vacation week.
Are we at a point, though, where we have to decide on an assessment center? I don't think we have a choice yet, right? We don't have a...
No, recommendation doesn't come forward.
Hasn't come forward yet, okay. All right, so that, maybe another couple of weeks out, you think? Or are you going to be meeting again, or in between, or?
We took school break off, so we're going to get back in the saddle.
Okay, all right. Back to Ed, FY '22 audit update. And part of this was our, also the ARPA federal audit for the first part of our...
Correct, and the only thing hanging left, and I've got, I will work with Sabrina over the next two days to get the last couple of pieces of information on that, so that can be completed.
And is, now that's the town audit as well as the ARPA money, right? There's two, sort of two prongs to that audit, right? It's the...
The federal single audit, which is the last piece that is left, is basically what the auditor chose was ARPA and ESSER. But, you know, this is, we will spend over $750,000 on federal grants, not only for '22, but probably '23, '24, '25. So this will continue, and when they come in, as long as they establish, which they will, that in, shall we say, in total, in aggregate, the town has spent over $750,000 in federal grants, then they, out of that, will pick the particular grants that they are going to audit as part of that federal single audit.
Okay, and this year it just happened to be the ARPA this year, but it may not be next time?
Could be, you know, two totally different ones, yeah, for the '23 audit, so, yeah.
Okay. All right, FY '23 closeout update.
And we were talking to Bradley about that today. He has not heard anything back from Mickey as of yet, so tomorrow, I'm going to make the suggestion that he does email Mickey and ask the particular questions, since it is the end of February of, okay, where are you in your process? When do you figure you can help us out with our school grant accounts, so we can get to our close?
So if somebody reminds me tomorrow to, I will email, I can share the email address of Sarah, I forget what her last name is, but she's the head of the special outside consultant that we brought in straight in all the, Munfin, Munfin, whatever it is?
Hunter.
I don't remember. But between, you know, maybe a couple of other people on this email address other than just Mickey.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the Zoom meeting we had a couple of weeks ago was with Mickey and was a gentleman from Munfin, yeah, that's working on the project.
But that would be helpful, probably, just, because Mickey may be getting overloaded now too, so if there's another person also looking at a text or an email that would say, oh, well, you know...
Right, Sarah's got the troops on the ground and, you know, it's...
And she's from the Munfin group?
Yeah, and we're paying $250,000. So, I mean, she knows this is a priority, she knows Norris is a priority. She gave me the update that the two unreconciled grants at Norris that they thought were in deficit had been properly identified and corrected. So as far as I, so there should not be a deficit on any grants at Norris, as of the last meeting that I had.
Well, I think, I mean, I think the, whatever we can do to help nudge them along, because I, you know, even though we have our extension, I don't want us to be at the nth hour doing our Schedule A and whatever, I want it done as early as we can do it.
I mean, even though Deb was gracious enough to match the extension that was given to Hampshire and this general case, I actually didn't care to go that late. I was actually, if she had come back and said, you know, March 31st, I would have been thrilled at that, so. I would rather not go past March 31st with this.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Other?
Yeah.
I noticed fiscal year '24's audit, I noticed, is in there, but I did not, I saw a big zero under Bradley's budget submission. He's got nothing in for fiscal year '25's audit. Did we, I thought we had a two, we have a three-year, so there is a no number in there.
Yes, there's a number there, so I will remind him to fill that in.
Thank you.
Since we have the contract, he might be thinking that, even though that he pays that, that I was going to fill that in, but I will go over that with him.
Well, it's 48 hours and ticking, you're leaving. Bradley needs to do it.
Just so we don't lose sight of it, that's the main thing. Okay.
Yeah, thanks for catching that, John.
Any other business that can't wait until our regular March 12th?
I believe we have two items. One is, do we need to appoint a select board member to the conservation commission for a short period of time?
Yeah, honestly, I think we do. I did get a message from Joy, and she will be back at our next select board meeting. I think at this point in time, she's trying to figure out what she can handle with a new baby, as Scott may appreciate as well, and whether she can manage all the committees. So I'm not sure that she's going to want to take on all the committees that she has. So at this point in time...
So could I ask which one of our junior members wants to accept it? I'm free to nominate them.
I'm willing to accept it.
I nominate Dan, available to fill that post.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we have a nomination for Dan, yes.
Second.
Any period of time?
All right, so I think we'll probably...
Until the expiration date of the, until there's a posting or an election for that official. Do you know what that is?
I mean, usually when we, after the elections, we usually reorganize committee liaisons and so forth anyway at our...
So you're going to say to June 30th?
Yeah, maybe to June 30th at the most, or something like that. So that allows us time to meet. So Dan would be appointed, so would that, he'd be a voting member of CONCOM, and that helps whenever one of them, I mean, they're so strapped at the moment that if one of them is absent, then they don't have a quorum. They have four people there, but they risk canceling a meeting if they don't have a quorum. So this will put a...
So this is an appointed board, and one of the appointments is a sitting member of the select board.
Right now.
And Joy is on leave, extended, and that's why Dan is being appointed to fill out the remainder of this year until the election.
Correct.
And he will therefore be appointed and voting and welcomed. We know he's a credentialed member of the CONCOM, let there be no confusion about that. You have a motion and a second, Madam Chair.
Yes, indeed, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Dan, it's all yours. I think they have a meeting coming up in early March sometime, so. You know, the Monday night routine, that hasn't changed, I think. Good, and then...
The second item is, the next regularly scheduled select board meeting is March 12th. So I'm just going to bring up the thought tonight that the select board might consider making the motion and moving through and have discussing opening up the town meeting warrant for the submission of articles as of tomorrow, and I'm going to suggest perhaps that you leave them open until Wednesday, March, yeah, March, April 3rd at the close of business, and they should be submitted to the town administrator's office.
Now, does that give us, we need, according to Robert, we need to sign the warrant on the 23rd, so between, in that 20 days, that's enough time to go to KP to review and so forth and make changes?
And hopefully they float in before that, so they can be...
Teasmealed?
Teasmealed, exactly.
So...
Okay, so to close the articles, you're recommending, open it now, as of whatever, tomorrow, and close it as of April 3rd, which is a Wednesday?
Yeah, and then you would have them for your meeting packets on April 9th.
Yeah, I was just trying to say, you're way ahead of us in terms of the scheduling here, that's good. Our next meetings, 26th of March, so, yeah.
Then if you wanted to back, you know...
Yeah, the 9th would be our April meeting, so that would make sense.
I mean, otherwise, you could back it off and say, open them as of tomorrow, and the close of submissions would be, let's say, I gotta do this, April...
You usually have about three weeks, though, don't you? Usually you are.
Yeah, I mean, because, yeah.
Could we have them for the...
So I'd say either March 20th or March 21st.
Right.
I move that we cause the, we call for warrants, or suggestions for warrants...
For articles?
For articles to be opened tomorrow, February 28th, and for them to be closed Thursday, March 21st at 3:00 PM.
Second.
All right, motion by John, second by Dan, any discussion?
Good.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sounds good. That gives enough time, and then we'd have them in time for the March 26th meeting to take a look and see what's...
Who seconded that?
This guy.
Dan. So that would get us in time for the, our March meeting, I believe, yeah. Great, okay, very good. Anything else? Couple of things we hadn't, we thought about, all right? If not, let's keep on moving.
Do we actually vote on that?
Do we all vote?
Yeah.
We have that, I'm sorry.
Got to double vote.
Aye. We're in agreement, yes.
It's a suspenders.
Thank you, I know. Yep, so that'll be March 21st, closing of warrant article submission.
At 3:00 PM.
At 3:00 PM.
That's right.
Submission of articles, okay. All right, moving on to old business. Out of that list of anything, is there anything that is updating? I think these are all kind of just there as partly...
Did we get the recording done for the phone, so we can take that off?
Recording done for what?
The phones?
The famous update on...
Isn't that what's hanging on the blink?
Going to go steal some bystander.
In fact, I'll be up tonight, putting together the other end of that IT thing, because we have a planned date for the final migration from Novus of the weekend of March 16th. So I also want to send along with that, shall we say, that's a go weekend, a list of things that I have been sending them to do. There are a bunch of emails, and actually, I think, two new accounts that I've asked them to set up, and I want to make sure that that's done, and I also want to try and get, one of those new accounts is over the library for one of the laptops, and I want to see if they can do that update remotely before that weekend, and I'm also going to try to see if I can possibly get them to do some of the COA update work before that weekend.
Okay. All right, anything else? These are mostly on there just for ticklers, so that we don't lose track of...
So the auto attendant fell behind that again.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, the first item, Stormwater Utilities Study. What I recall is that Tyon Bond proposed to do that work, and it was more expensive than we anticipated. Is that where it ended?
I gotta, I still have to contact them to see if they can sharpen that price, or we're going to have to find another vendor, or just say, can't do it.
Okay, because that's funny, we had, I think we'd put aside an ARPA if I'm not...
If I remember, it's a five, the delta's 5,000, right? It's large.
Yeah, yeah, I think they came in quite a bit over what we had...
5,000.
I think we had set aside 55,000 for the budget, and I think they came in at like 64 or 65, yeah.
Remind them that we're a tax-exempt nonprofit organization.
And they do do a lot of business with the town, so maybe we could get a bit of a break just to get this done, because I think it would be a very useful exercise to go through this and see what we can develop here.
I mean, there was a simple way to get to our budget number, but I don't recommend doing it, as we could have just shaved off the portion of paying them for the public outreach, but that makes absolutely no sense to me to do the study and develop the methodology and then not have the information to, shall we say, sell it to the public.
Right, because this is all leading down the road to a tax.
Yeah.
And all indications from most of the communities that Randall and I heard from at the particular meeting we went to is, most of the communities that have implemented it in the last five, seven years, the first time it came up, it got shot down, so.
Yeah.
Second time it came up, it actually passed, so I think we need all the information to help us with public outreach.
This is the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, that's it, right?
Stormwater Utility Fund.
Utility Fund, okay, so we, guys, we'd obligated, or approved 55,000 for our fund, yeah. So that's the amount, and they came in over that, so.
I'll get back to Dan, I'll...
We could at least get a letter out to them.
Sometime tomorrow.
They ought to be able to let him think about this.
Okay.
We reached out to them before, but I don't remember ever hearing...
They ever answered, yeah, okay. All right.
On the list, there's got to be somebody else out there that can do this.
Yeah.
Next?
Next on, personnel change form, PCF.
Oh, you're skipping all the way down.
Or PRF, no? Well, I didn't, is there anybody else on the old business? I wasn't hearing anything.
Well, just, do we have confirmation that the letter went out to the railroad on the utility right away? Did we send the request just asking if they were even interested?
I will say no, because your discussion was reach out to KP, your motion was send the letter. I have reached out to KP Law, since they do have the contacts for the railroad attorney to actually reach out to them. And find out if they have any interest in going down that road.
So we're working on sending the letter to ask if they have interest.
Yeah, and basically KP will end up doing that for us, rather than the town administrator.
Okay.
Could we hold up that second part of the process of sending a letter to the railroad? I'd like to provide some information to the KP attorney who provided the opinion. Had graciously provided me the name and the contact, so we can get to the same person and provide them with some additional documentation about other places and similar examples and so on, with railroad bank, railbank provisions, yeah.
Well, maybe we can just forward the information you've got to Scott to follow through on? I mean, this isn't going to happen with, in the next 48 hours with Ed for sure, so this will be something that Scott will have to follow up on, and he'll be having discussions with KP Law too, so we can combine all that. Yeah, you've got some other samples of what's been done that would help them was, you know, get ahead, start up some of their research, maybe?
Just to clarify, is that, you just want to provide documentation, or you want to have an actual conversation?
I would hope that an actual conversation would ensue, but I'll provide the information, and if they want to expand on the comments that they provided to town council, that would be awesome.
And my suggestion for that of a follow-up conversation... And my suggestion for that of a follow-up conversation would be a Zoom meeting with the entire select board and individual member.
Right, so that, I was just, because this hasn't come up before, I was just going to point out, for clarification, if you didn't know, that the chair is the only one that can do it unless we make a motion to authorize the non-chair. You know what I'm saying? The chair is the only one that can have the conversation.
With the attorney.
Okay.
So I'll provide the information to Town Administrator.
Okay.
Yep.
And the chair will.
Well, we can pass that on to KP Law, but then have them take a look at it, and then when, when it's, you know, if they deem that they want to know more about that, we can schedule a Zoom meeting. I mean, I think that would be the way to go, but it would be a, you know, probably the easiest way to try and do that.
So.
Figure that out at some point with whoever's available to attend. Yep.
And the classification of deja vu, I make a motion to approve PRF for Administrative Assistant in the Assessor's Office.
Second.
With the following modifications.
Oh darn, of course.
Lord. I have the original here.
Okay.
The following modifications, that the pay scale be adjusted to actually reflect the scale of the summary, 1571 to 1876. The number of hours, instead of being fixed at 24, give a range of no less than 20, no more than 24. The understanding from the assessor's office is they will have to budget on the 24 hours, because there's not a cap, and that this is for one position only.
And they've agreed to that idea too?
Oh, yeah, there was no objection at the PBB meeting, it has Bradley's signature. This passed by PBB.
Yep, so this is changing it from the, it was changing the hours and it's a benefited position. It was going to be a benefited position, but this is changing the hours.
It already was, and the original request was to go to 24, and then they brought it down to.
I should tear this one up, is what you're saying, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay, all right.
And.
Allows them to repost it?
So I, the PBB Committee, and I don't disagree with this, this is change, this has a budgetary change, so therefore, it was the thought of the committee that finance needs to sign off on it.
And I had already sent this one.
We're going to have it.
I had already sent this one along to finance, so I will just, I'll scan that one and send it to Donna and tell her this is the amended one.
Oh, and the other clarification is that the manual says it has to be posted for 14 days, 14 calendar days, 10 business days, so to take effect upon that.
Okay.
I will let the TA know that I believe the assessors are going to reach out to him tomorrow. They, they didn't know how to comply with the requirement in our book that says it has to be posted on social media, so we referred them to your office.
Well, it'd be posted under the job section on the town website.
Well, the committee felt that that meant it had to be.
The town administrator's office does not do social media.
I know, but PPP doesn't do it, but the manual says, Town Clerk's Board, Town Website, and Social Media. So I will tell you that PPP believes that that is the town's Facebook page. Whether that's true or not, what's been done in the past, I'm sure you will elaborate.
I would probably say that would probably be, yes, the only social media we do.
That's the official.
We send them to you.
Okay, yeah, so on the, on the website, so just because, so it's posted for 14 days, Administrative Assistant for the assessors, current person needs to reapply?
Well, they've already applied, so they're in consideration, there's a question of if anybody else applies.
Okay, got it.
Needs finance approval.
Needs finance approval, and.
One position.
The PRF has got the, the, whatever.
Range.
The range, but the posting itself doesn't usually have the range on it, correct?
It can, theirs does, the last page.
Doesn't have to, but, yeah, it can.
Okay, okay, all right, I have signed it, I'll move it back that direction.
Well, we haven't even voted on it yet.
You signed without a vote? We don't even have a second yet.
I thought, I thought Stephen seconded it.
You guys pass it down, I just sign.
And I was going to say, what you read complies exactly with the version I have, except it doesn't. The range of hours is a correction on this.
Very good, all right, so motion by, by John, second by Stephen, all those in favor of the.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, you pass me things to sign, I sign, what can I tell you? Okay.
Shall we waive the reading of warrants and move on to executive session?
So much fun.
Oh, let's just do them quick, there aren't that many.
All right, let's see if my eyesight holds up. The first one is warrant 22-43V, yes, two-year-old loss check, that is the amount of minus $450 vendor warrant. The replacement check warrant, 24-30V, $420, I think that's the replacement amount, never goes down, but any rate, that is a vendor payable warrant. Next one, P 24-31, the amount of $322,359.83 payroll warrant. Payroll deduction warrant, 24-31, the amount of $51,640.34 vendor payable warrant with Hampshire Quarterly Assessment, W 24-32, in the amount of $1,604,141.74 payroll warrant, P 24-33, in the amount of $330,844.75 payroll deduction warrant, PD 24-33, in the amount of $54,133.58. That concludes this reading.
Very good, thank you, all right, good, all right. No other documents to sign that I'm aware of, no minutes to approve, anything on pending items? We've talked about the Green Community Grant already, I don't know that there's anything on East Street to talk about at this point in time?
We can tell you that Randall, Randall and I had a preliminary to the tip meeting with, I forget what committee that was.
JTC.
JTC, JTC Committee, I don't know, week and a half ago, or whatever, you know, so that process is moving forward. Randall pointed out that between the last time it was front of, front of the JTC and now, our point score had increased, so that was a good thing. And I don't know if you remember anything else from that meeting you want to bring up?
Well, just in general, they use the points to rank the projects.
Use the microphone, please, thank you, sorry.
I'm sorry, who are you?
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. So they use the TEC points to, to rank the project, and that's, you know, the higher points you get, the more likely you are to get funding for the project, so it's good, it's moving in that direction. It's an ongoing process that as surveying and different things happen, that score can fluctuate based on information that we guess at now, and that is solidified or confirmed later.
So we're on the tip list, but has there been any money allocated yet toward it, or not yet?
They don't, they don't, we're on the, they don't allocate until the actual year you're on.
Okay.
Yeah, and now, I'm going to mess this up, we're on for 27, I'm going to mix this in the.
Yeah, the Green, I keep getting, I think the Greenway's 27 and East Street is 28, FY.
Yeah, and we did.
Don't quote me on that.
We did find out something very interesting, because we were also expecting at this JTC to talk about the Greenway. They basically told us that they, they weren't going to talk, we didn't need to talk about that on that, that particular meeting, because the state is now going to earmark all the funds for the construction of the Greenway, and they're not going to use any federal funds for that, so that kind of.
Wasn't under the purview of that committee anymore.
So the JTC isn't under purview because it's all state funding.
Sounds like we lost the money.
My goodness.
Uh, no, I'm.
I think so, I think it seemed.
I'm kind, the state's committed to do this, they're hot on this. So I'm wondering, because the, shall we say, legal claim that has been filed on this has been filed against the federal government way back, due to when the federal government originally gave, I won't say gave, but gave the railroad the way and the venue to acquire the right of way from the people that owned that right of way at the time, and I wonder if this is the state's way of saying, okay, since the federal government's getting sued, they may delay giving us federal funding, therefore, we're going to step up to the plate.
No, it's interesting, I mean.
And take on the entire funding for construction.
Yeah, with various budget cuts, I'm, I'm a little surprised, but that's good news, if that's true, so, okay. All right, so I think the only other one on here is just Assistant Account and Recruitment, and that's something I just want to keep on Bradley's forefront, and I'm sure you've talked about it already.
Well, and actually, I'm going to give Scott a thumbs up, because when, one of the times we're up there talking about procurement and working on some stuff, Scott asked Bradley directly of how the Assistant Accounting Recruitment is going. Of course, he knows, because we're utilizing that empty desk for Scott, Scott right now, but, and then, so I brought it, brought it up, that, yeah, that's going to become a priority, and we want to see that filled by the end of April.
Yeah, okay. Good, all right, any questions, anything else?
Glad to hear that.
We have our next select board meeting on the 29th, hopefully with FinCom here. This will be our budget hearing for Highway and Fire, and then regular select meetings, select board meetings on March 12th and 26th. So with that, we will be closing open session and moving into executive session, and the reason being, MGL in Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Highway Superintendent. So with that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion and add to that, that we invite in the Highway Superintendent, the current town administrator and the incoming town administrator to join us in executive session.
Correct, okay.
Second.
All right, so we will be moving, we will not be coming back to open session, so I'll take a vote on this.
Lumbra, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Vali, aye.
Al's aye, okay, we will adjourn open session here at about 9:02, and that's the end of our meeting, we will not be coming back after executive.
Two-minute break?
Yeah, let's have a couple-minute break, thank you.